Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council. Today's Monday, February 14th. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the council, please feel free to fill out the speaker's card and hand it up here to staff if you would, please. Okay, if I can have everyone please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. DeGiovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Excuse?
Dr. Rod.
Here.
Mr. Boyna Ventura.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Present. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Before we move on to the agenda, our holding center is open. We're glad that Daly City City Hall is a part. So I'll remind everybody once again, come out and vote, and vote often. No, vote. All right, thank you very much. Oh, matter of fact, I think this perfectly segues into what's going to happen next, and that is presentations. And I would be honored if I can have Councilmember DeGiovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that's number three, but you know what? I'm gonna move that around. I'm gonna put you first.
Aww.
Okay? So Councilmember DeGiovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This is a presentation on a centennial suffrage celebration to Ms. Martha Bookbinder, who's the president from 2019 to 2021, the League of Women Voters, North and Central San Mateo County. Councilmember DeGiovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to present this. I would like to read you the proclamation of the Centennial Suffrage Celebration. During the historic year 2020, we celebrate the centennial of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution. Votes for women ratified and signed into record, honored each year on August the 26th as Equality Day. And whereas in 2020, the League of Women Voters celebrates its 100th anniversary, and the League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County joins us and more than 700 other local state chapters to celebrate this historic milestone. And whereas, on February the 14th, 1920, the League of Women Voters was founded to prepare for the implementation of the 19th Amendment. Its founder is Carrie Chapman. Kat believed that within five years, a League of Women Voters could give millions of women voters a crash course in civic engagement and the American political system. And whereas, as we look to a vibrant future on this threshold of our next 100 years, the League members across the North and Central San Mateo County continue to recruit and invite members and activists who share the League's commitment to making democracy work. And whereas, the League's historic commitment to register, educate, and mobilize voters is not only stronger, but more effective than ever, utilizing each tools as vote411.org, a cutting-edge election information website utilized by millions of voters each election cycle. Now therefore, be resolved that the right to vote by every citizen across the country is vital to making changes in our political system. That access to vote is essential, and support from millions of informed voters, regardless of formal party affiliation, guarantees and empowers a government defined by the first three words of the U.S. Constitution, "We, the people." Signed and sealed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Daly City on this 24th day of February 2020. And it's my honor to present you with this, and thank you for all the hard work you did, not just for the women, but it's for all democracy today. Thank you, Ms. Bookbinder. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much. I really appreciate this. You know, I have lived a lot of my life, two-thirds of my life, in this area, Daly City, Colma, Broadmoor Village. And I wanted so much to have Daly City do this for us because it's the north part of the county. And sometimes, as I've worked in San Francisco all the way in the peninsula, we are skipped over. You know, like, we go from San Francisco, and even San Francisco doesn't exist because it's San Francisco. So I just wanted so badly that you would be part of celebrating this with us because Daly City is the biggest city in San Mateo County. So on that, I just wanna say I'm just so very, very glad that you have done this and that you will be part of this wonderful year and what comes next because there's every challenge before us. And the League of Women Voters, I'll have you know, news flash, we do accept men as members. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, hold on for a second. Is there any comments from council before, from Ms. Bookbinder?
Put the men's front.
Anyone?
I just wanna say congratulations again. As a person that teaches history and social sciences, this is like such a key crucial moment in our, in our history. And just to stress too, where's that flyer at, Mayor?
The what?
That flyer.
I was about to hold it up again.
You know, we got, we got to vote, you know, especially in this, this election that's coming up and is very crucial in our, in our history. So, so for those that are out there, you know, voting is something that's not the past, but it's also in the future, but the work starts here in the present. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dasmarc Wawal.
Just a quick one. You know, Ms. Bookbinder, I have the honor of knowing you personally. So I know you pound the pavement wherever you go, and you are the grassroots woman that has always been there. And to all the other women that are Jackie and all them that's been down there, that's done the work, and they come up here when we have our candidate forums, and you pound the pavement, and you keep it going, you evolve around it. And we really, really appreciate it because we should never take for granted that people lost their lives to vote. And it hasn't even been that long that women and people of color that are out here tonight, that were not given that right to vote as well or as men. And so we still have a long ways to go, but we can do it all together. So thank you very much. And Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DeGiovanni. Ms. Bookbinder, you've definitely heard the accolades thus far. Just so that everyone know, when did you meet me?
A week ago.
A week ago.
Yeah, I did a Black History Month celebration from Leslie.
Yeah, Black History Month celebration. That's the first time you met me, right?
Yes.
And what did you ask me when you met me?
If you would consider being part of a proclamation that I am asking of all of the town and city councils in our area of North and Central San Mateo County. Because I wanted you to not, not do it because I didn't ask and I really pursue it.
Thank you very much. And it only goes to show that this council is a progressive council, and we listen to the people. And we'd like to thank you for all the work that you've done and that you continue to do. And you answered that long question that I've been waiting so long to, and I always wondered, when it says League of Women Voters, you can take men as well.
Yes.
So anyway, as a reminder to everyone and to reiterate, vote, okay? Madam City Clerk, we're really putting this out tonight.
Thank you.
Vote. And don't forget one other thing. And what's that, Ms. Bookbinder? You should know.
Well, be informed as to what you vote for.
But to vote, and there's something else important that we need to be doing, that we need to fill out when it comes.
Oh, register.
Oh, well, the registration. Come on, somebody help me out here. Census, okay? Let's be counted.
That wasn't fair. If you had said, what else does the Constitution compel you to do? I would have answered that.
Ms. Bookbinder, you know life is not fair, you know? All right.
But you have a great sense of humor. I like that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening. Congratulations once again.
Don't forget to vote.
All right. The next item, we're gonna go back in order of the agenda. And this is something that's very, very important to Daly City. Stephen Stolti, who was our Sustainability Coordinator, I'd like to acknowledge you for your work that you continue to do. And it's a matter of the collaboration and getting the word out about our city. And the word has gotten out. So subsequently, I'd like to have a presentation of the 2019 Helen Putnam Award for Excellence and the winner of Project Green Space, Seth Miller. Seth, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Hi, Seth Miller with the League of California Cities. Nice to see you this evening, Mayor Sylvester, councilmembers. The winner is Daly City. That's the punchline. I'll get there. And, but the truth is, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come here and celebrate this moment with you. You all have been involved with the League in various capacities. And the important thing here is that Daly City competed with 182 other cities for this award. It's called the Helen Putnam Award. It was established in 1982. There were 12 winners in different categories throughout the state. I'll get into a little bit of the detail of what it is, but it's a rigorous process. And to win the award, and we'll do the photo op afterwards, but to win the award means you'll get circulated throughout the 482 city, League of Cities network, through our website, through our magazine. And what often happens, and Mr. Stolti will maybe regret this a bit, other cities will want to copy you. Because this idea of greening your city, of trying to plant trees, of trying to get ahead of climate change in a city that's largely urbanized, that's so dense, is cutting edge. The governor this year allocated multiple billion dollars to the idea of catalytic climate change resiliency programming. You guys have been doing it since 2016. Your application was the most thorough of all. And I just want to highlight a few of the components of what made your application so impressive and why Daly City was honored for this. Project Green Spray Space, PGS, began in 2016 with a $25,000 grant. Are there folks that are familiar with the beginnings of this program other than Stephen here? Well, I know there was community engagement, and it's what made your application stand out so much. What you've accomplished, and I'll get right to the numbers. New streets and trees, 570 trees adopted, 11 rain gardens installed, over 680 volunteers participating in this greening project. This is with $25,000. Very little money seated. Hundreds of students planted trees at JFK Elementary School, transformed city-owned vacant lots into residential areas for native plants. Boys and girls clubs planted trees at the Bay Shore Community Center. And more than anything, set the ground for what I think can be replicated and what the League hopes you can now go after additional state dollars to do with AmeriCorps volunteers, with other volunteers, and make this part of what makes this city such a unique and vibrant place. This cap and trade program that the governor talks about, and I can't help it, but go with what the election is largely about, the future, resiliency. You know, we can plant trees and do beautiful things, but it's coming together and engaging community groups, nonprofit groups, and volunteers, which is where the real magic of resiliency comes in. And Daly City is a model of this. And if it's not too much time, I'd love to do a photo op so we can then circulate this and get other cities to participate what you have done here in Daly City.
Thank you so much. Any comments from any council members before I make one?
I just wanna say thank you for coming through. I just wanna reiterate everything that you said in terms of getting ahead of like climate change and getting students to, and youth and that community to reengage in, like, the earth part of being an urbanized community. You know, I have some students that feel like it's gross to just touch dirt, you know? But to get them engaged, that this is part of them, that the earth is second nature to them. And to take care of, of, not, to take care of what's going on locally will affect things globally. Thank you.
Just in short, I'm sure the mayor will say more, but we know that we couldn't have done this without Stephen Stolti, right? So he really not just takes the lead, but he, he does it with passion and very humbled to have him as part of that. And when you go out there and just volunteer, and I know we all went to receive with the mayor, myself, and the vice mayor, and to receive the award up in, for Long Beach. But this is really incredible. And Stephen, you know, you're very humble, and you just do the work, and you never ask for accolades. But I know that everybody else is gonna say the same thing. There's not, not much more I can say. And all the volunteers that came in our city was amazing. Like, you were talking about the civic engagement, and once people have a tree, and they plant it in the median, and they have arboretum, people were really excited, right? So, and we've actually kept that momentum going. So that's, that's pretty incredible. So for me, very humbled just to go out there with everybody else and with him as a leadership. So, and thank you, Seth. You do a lot, so pretty appreciate it as well.
Thank you, Councilmember DeGiovanni. Mr. Miller, you've come a long way. We are very honored that you are here this evening to present a award to our city. You know, a lot of credit goes, it's amazing, $25,000 grant is how we started. I remember the advertisement that I got in my home, "Plant a tree." And adopt a tree. And the city was providing you trees. And almost picked up one from the front, but we got this one tree now that, but anyway. Thank you so much. Again, Councilmember DeGiovanni and Vice Mayor Manalo, who's not here this evening. There are many pictures taken of the planting of these trees, especially at Top of the Hill, Daly City. We have a garden up there, and what comes to mind is T-O-H-I-A. Top of the Hill.
Top of the Hill.
Okay. And they really played an important part. So with that being said, I thank you so much. Mr. Miller, if you would come on up here to the dais with the award, and if I can have Stephen Stolti to come up. See, he's, see how humble he is? He's, he's readying his phone so he can take a picture of us, but it's him that's gonna be up here. So give your phone to someone else. Come on up.
That is correct.
Aww. Thank you so much.
I thought you would like that, Seth.
Likewise.
Absolutely.
Nice to see you.
Good.
Stephen.
I'll come on this side. Could you be acceptable?
Yes.
Kinda like that. Kinda like that.
All right. One, two, three.
It's like, very good phone, Stephen. I see one lens on it. You need the one with the three lens on.
I got it.
Okay. You got it?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Aww.
Thank you. Congratulations, Stephen.
We are very lucky.
All right.
Thank you so much. Great to seeing you. I'm ready for the next award.
Okay. Thank you very much. Congratulations, everyone, once again. The next presentation is for ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan Project. And if I can have, is it Ashley Tomerlin of MIG?
Actually, let me do a brief introduction. I'm Sibelicaia, Senior Management Analyst in Public Works. And we've been working with MIG consultants since last year, and they are helping us in developing an ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. The latest plan that we have is from a while ago.
Okay.
And it's obviously outdated, so we've been working with them. They have already conducted some inspections in building facilities that are accessible to the public. They also have conducted some inspections in the public right-of-way and, you know, at different intersections and parking lots. And they have identified some of the barriers. So I wanted to give you that introduction before bringing Ashley, who will do the full presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very so much.
How do I change the slides? Thank you. All right. Good evening. My name is Ashley Tomerlin. I am a landscape architect and certified access specialist. I work for the consulting firm MIG, who's been working with the city to develop their self-evaluation and transition plan. I'm here tonight to present an overview of the public draft that's currently available on the city website. And we are accepting public comment and are eager to get public feedback on the plan, the prioritization, and how the city plans to move forward with making facilities more accessible. Quick background on the ADA. It is civil rights law that mandates equal opportunity for people with disabilities. The ADA prohibits discrimination based on disabilities. It's broken into five titles, but we are here tonight because of Title II, which is, covers state and local governments and public transportation. Your obligation as a Title II agency is to ensure that you have the self-evaluation, which is the evaluation of your policies, programs, and services offered to the public. You develop an ADA grievance procedure. So if somebody finds that a facility or program is not accessible to them because of their disability, they have a way to make a request for an accommodation or a modification. And then the ADA requires that the city designate an ADA coordinator, someone who the public can go to with their complaint, with their request, and oversees the entire city's Title II program accessibility. Public agencies with more than 50 employees are also required to develop a transition plan, which goes beyond just the programs and services, but looks at the physical conditions of your buildings and ensures that those are accessible to people with disabilities. The ADA self-evaluation transition plan that we put together has the executive summary, an introduction where we go over the legal mandate and the regulations that are spurring this plan. Quick definitions, because there is a lot of jargon and abbreviations. The self-evaluation is where we went through your policies and programs, public works, design standards for the right-of-way, and we were looking for places that needed improvement or places that you were doing a really great job, and we wanted to give you kind of some kudos and say, continue doing this, you're doing a good job. The transition plan is the result of our facility evaluations. We looked at all of the buildings that are open to the public in Daly City. And we went, we worked with staff. We worked with a focus group of people with disabilities or people representing organizations with people with disabilities to develop a prioritization process, identify which facilities really are the top priority, what are kind of the next tier where you need to look at the physical access, and then so on. We reviewed the notice policy, the grievance procedure, and the ADA coordinator position, and we made some recommendations and gave resources based on the Department of Justice's description of the ADA coordinator role. And then we provide a chapter of resources that has links and organizations that provide any number of answers to questions you might have regarding the ADA and providing accessible programs and services. And then the appendices are a sample staff questionnaire from the policy and program review, the accommodations and grievance forum, the public outreach that we've done so far. I'll say that we have another focus group scheduled this Wednesday. And we, more the mayor, we would love input and getting some feedback. And then the last is the barrier summary report, where you can go into all of the facilities that we've gone into and evaluated and see high level what we found that needed to be remedied. There's also the thousand-page facility reports where you can go into each and every single barrier that we found. So our hope for the city is that in using the self-evaluation, that city staff recognize that there's modifications that can be made to programs and services that still allow the program and service to be provided to the public in the same manner, but it also allows for people with disabilities to participate. Adjustments to existing policies and generally improving the inclusivity of city policies and standards. For the transition plan, we're hoping to have a strategic framework for the city and public works to develop capital improvement projects, identify priorities for barrier removal where it's needed, suggestions on what alterations can happen, and providing the auxiliary aids or services to assist people with disabilities. This is a sample of our facility report of John Daly Library. This is two doors, and it's a full page of reports. But we go through, we identify the barrier, we give the as-built dimension. So we kind of flag what it is built to as today and provide the standard number for the regulation that, or the building code that calls out the requirements. Some common things that we found in Daly City were just the placements of accessories in the restrooms, some signage issues with braille that was a little worn down and not legible tactically, placement of furniture, and then just some placement of a telephone in the planting bed. It's behind a curb. It's not accessible, so. And none of these are uncommon barriers. I see them in most cities. It's just really about training staff to look at it from that lens of accessibility, being aware of what those signages are, and providing them. The criteria that we provide, or developed for the prioritization was really looking at citizens' rights and responsibilities. Voting.
Um, cognitive, that again is really working with the person or working with their caregivers to figure out how they can best be incorporated and involved in the public program. Um, you also are limited in what you have to do with it changing the nature of your program. So you don't have to, what is it, um, make a rock climbing class accessible to somebody with a mobility disability. That would be changing the nature of that program. Um, if they want to participate, um, there's certain, you have to take that request seriously. Um, but if it is going to change the nature of that program or cause a safe, a legitimate safety issue, um, you do not have to make that, or accommodation.
Do you know if there are, when you do this evaluation and you're working with the staff, is, are, are you also going to be looking at funding in terms of what opportunities are there for maybe grants to help us be more accessible?
Um, we've worked with, uh, Public Works on some funding opportunities for bear, physical barriers in the right of way. Um, looking at how you can overlap, uh, pavement ma- maintenance programs, um, working with the state. Uh, there's a lot of agencies doing their transition plan updates right now because of federal highway dollars. Um, the Federal Highway Administration has tied all of their grant money to having an updated transition plan. So I think, uh, this plan was in part spurred by Caltrans grants and so getting that money to kind of pop through.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Dejivani.
I just want to say thank you because I know that when, and I thank, uh, Councilmember Buena Ventura for the sensory like we brought up in that ma- in the meeting and the blind and people have different issues, autism or, or all the spectrums, right? And what works best for them, like when you bring a mother in and let her, let her know what's best. So I appreciate the sensitivity and Mr. Chu and everyone, so been working with it. But there's always going to be something, like you said, but we really need to try to address and bring people in so they don't feel, um, we want to be inclusive and I appreciate that. So I think, and I appreciate that, so, uh, moving forward in the grants as well. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dejivani. Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilmember, uh, Buena Ventura because that was one of the questions I had on my mind, how are we going to pay for this? But, uh, I'm glad you answered that question, uh, very appropriately, I might, I might say. Um, did you also know that Daly City has applied to the World Health Organization to be H-friendly city?
That may have come up in our review.
Oh, okay. And there was a newspaper article approximately three weeks ago rating Daly City as number two of the places to grow old.
I missed that, but that is very exciting.
Okay. Uh, I also want to say that your report and the amount of work you've put in, uh, it was a lot of work and, uh, very comprehensive and a lot of things I did not know, but, uh, I'm seeing this, you're looking out for those who have disabilities and I can definitely see that as I'm getting older. Have you counted the steps from outside when you come in over here?
Yes, yes, we do.
And, and, uh, so I always, I always park in the back. So anybody who comes to City Hall, come around the back because there's no steps. But I'll tell you, it's, it's something else when the elevator goes out. But, uh, thank you so much. Uh, job well done and I'm sure with the information and with your cooperation that you received from our staff, uh, the city manager will, uh, definitely, and our Public Works, uh, person, Mr. Chu, will actually take this to heart and, uh, and consider that. And I'd like to thank, uh, Madam for introducing and giving us a prelude, uh, about you and your presentation. And I was a little taken back because usually you have a slide in the back says questions and that was gone, but it's all good. I, I think we got it. Mr. Chu?
Yes, just to be clear, this is an informational item, just to give council a heads up and to announce to the public that there's a public draft out for comments.
Nice.
Um, this item will formally come back to City Council for acceptance, uh, at a later date.
Okay.
April 27th.
I'm sorry, 12/27?
April 27th.
Oh, okay, because we're, uh, we're on Christmas holiday. April, okay. Thank you so much, Councilmember Dejivani.
A quick question, how do they access it online only or?
Um, I believe there are hard copies available here.
We can definitely make copies available if there aren't already.
If they need it.
Yes.
Thank you.
You can find it on the website.
And it's now available in both PDF and Word document that's much easier to read with a screen reader.
Thank you.
Do we got, no, do we have it emblazoned if somebody needs it? Can we do that?
Yeah.
That's a lot of work. I got you thinking now because I mean.
If it's requested, you can go through the process.
There you go. Thank you, thank you so much. Great job. Thank you. Okay. All right, the next item is the approval of the minutes for the meeting of February 10th. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, motion Buena Ventura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dejivani. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, the minutes have been approved. Next item is, oh, before we get to the next item. All right, the next item is the, um, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion, is there a second?
Um, is this the consent?
Agenda.
This is on the, second, okay, we have first and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Uh, agenda's approved.
Next item is the consent agenda and we have six items on the consent agenda.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve, um, with the exception of items number one and two. Are there any other items to, uh, pull?
Yes, um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number four, please.
Number four, okay, got it. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, items three, five, and six for approval.
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so, uh, the consent agenda, all the, I'm sorry, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the consent agenda is, um, approved with the exception of items number one, two, and four. I pulled items number one and two and before I move on is, um, Mr. Mandapat here in the audience today? Oh, neither of them are here? Okay, well, uh, I guess we'll just make it an announcement. Okay, uh, Dr. Rod, I'll let you just make an announcement as to what you have. Item number one is commending Val Mandapat on the occasion of his retirement.
So we have a resolution, um, number 20 dash 29, resolution of the City Council of the City of Daly City commending Valentino Val Mandapat on the occasion of his retirement. Whereas Val Mandapat has retired as of November 14, 2019, on November 14, 2019, concluding a career of 28 years with the City of Daly City. And whereas Val began his employment with City of Daly City on February 15, 1990 as a temporary building inspector and became permanent building inspector as of August 19, 1991. And whereas Val has a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from Baguio Colleges Foundation Philippines. And whereas Val has logged in over 1,344 hours of continuing education to strengthen his wide knowledge of building construction, plumbing, mechanical, gas, and electrical installations, accepted safety standards, principles, and techniques of inspection work, quality assurance, testing procedures applied to materials, and workmanship. And whereas Val acquired the following certifications since becoming employed by the City of Daly City, ICC Building Code Specialist, Building Inspector, Mechanical Inspector, Plumbing Inspector, Plans Examiner, and Building and Building Official. And whereas Val coordinated all efforts of the Building Department supervising the issuance, issuance of permits, inspections, plan preview, record storing, budgeting, City Council presentations, and ensured the city complied with state and municipal code to safeguard the life and limb of the people of Daly City. And whereas Val, in addition to his many contacts of homeowners, architects, designers, engineers, contractors, developers, business owners, realtors, and fellow members of the building world, his coworkers sadly bid him goodbye. And whereas Val has performed his many duties with distinction while also being a dedicated husband, father, and grandfather. And whereas upon his retirement, Val will now have much more time to devote to his family, friends, and personal interests like working on his mountain cabin, travel, golf, and involvement in Holy Angels Church. Now therefore be resolved by the City of Daly City that does hereby commend Valentino Mandapat for his many years of dedicated service and extends its best wishes to Val upon the occasion of his retirement. I hereby certify the foregoing to be a true copy of resolution, oh, my bad, the mayor, to be a true copy of resolution adopted by the City Council of Daly City, California, at a regular meeting thereof, the 24th day of February 2020, by following the members, eight, yeah, all of us.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Rod. Any, uh, comments, uh, on the, uh, resolution?
I'd like to just make one, um, as we know, Val was, uh, lives in our city, Daly City, and I believe he's the first Filipino building in our, not just our city, but I believe, I may be wrong, I believe in the whole state. He was the very first one, so he's a part of our history and, uh, very much missed. You can't take that many years and, and teach someone and, and move on. So let him know that we love him, but we see him in the community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Dejivani. And you said the first Filipino building?
Building inspector, yes.
Building inspector.
I think inspector and then maybe even in the whole state.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, in reference to Val, I've met him a couple of times and he definitely loved his job. And if there's anybody who was an expert or who knew, uh, he did. So, uh, congratulations to Mr. Mandapat, uh, motion to approve item number one.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Item number one is approved. Item number two that was pulled commending Omar Guzman on the occasion of his retirement. Dr. Rod?
Another resolution, 20 dash 30, resolution of the City Council of Daly, of City of Daly City commending Omar Guzman on the occasion of his retirement. Whereas Omar Guzman has retired as of February 2nd, 2020, concluding career of over 18 years with the Building Department at the City of Daly City. And whereas Omar began his part-time employment with the City of Daly City on August, or February 15, 1990 as a temporary permit technician and full-time employee on August 9, 1991 as a permit technician with an AA degree from the City College of San Francisco. And whereas Omar had over 12 years experience as an inventory manager and purchasing representative prior to being employed by the City of Daly City that equipped him with the skills of multitasking, record-keeping, and documentation, and good communication. And whereas Omar has successfully, successfully completed courses and trainings as they pertain to his position. Counter-tech in California, over-the-counter plan checking, permit technician, and advanced permit technician workshops, flame guard CPVC, Bayren Codes and Standards Program, Residential Inspection, and California Residential Code. And whereas Omar has provided excellent customer service to the general public who have approached a building counter by press, by processing their building permit applications, issuing over-the-counter permits, calculating permit fees, providing information concerning building permit requirements, explaining code and inspection procedures, and routing plans for department, departmental reviews. And whereas Omar did this by injecting humor at every step of the way, being notorious for asking if they wanted an order of french fries along with their building permit or if they wished to file a complaint to go over to Macy's Department to do so. And whereas Omar has performed his many duties with distinction while also being a dedicated father, brother, and friend. And whereas Omar will now have much more time devoted to his family, including his two sons and daughter-in-law, friends, and personal interests like European travel, gardening, writing, photography, lays days in a hammock, living abroad and opera singing. Now, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of City of Daly City that it does hereby commend Omar Guzman for his many years of dedicated service and extends its best wishes to Omar upon the occasion of his retirement.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Any comments for, uh, Mr. Guzman?
Just wishing the best in his retirement and.
He's already making a plan to go to El Salvador.
Wow.
Making a plan to what?
To go to El Salvador.
Oh, okay. Um, I didn't read this full, uh, resolution and, uh, well, I, I say that for a reason because I see that there's a couple of things in there and when I first met Omar is when I, um, just before I got on the City Council and just went down there and he'd give me that look and that certain smirk, whether he wanted to say something funny or maybe he shouldn't say something funny. But, you know, you never forget things like that, especially when you feel comfortable and a, a place that you first go to, that's something that remains with you all the time. And that remained with me for all the time I've been here in Daly City. And to hear that he did that with the public as well, that's sending a clear message. Uh, he really enjoyed his job, he enjoys people, and he definitely loved what he's doing. So congratulations, Omar. All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept, uh, the resolution on behalf of Mr. Guzman. Motion, anyone?
So moved.
So moved by Buena Ventura, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations for both and, uh, we wish them well.
Yes.
Okay, item number four, uh, that was pulled by Councilmember Dejivani. Uh, Councilmember?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, item number four is, uh, authorizing time extension of use permit UPR dash 5 dash 17, 12820, temporary storage of new automobiles on vacant drive-in theater site at 607 Carter Street. And I believe it's, um, Ms. Mothersen, please? Thank you, Ms. Mothersen.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel. Um, as the counsel may recall, back in 2017, a use permit, temporary use permit was, uh, approved to allow the temporary storage of vehicles that were for sale. Um, the use permit was approved for a period of three years with the option to extend, um, up to two years. So, uh, now that it's, uh, scheduled to expire in June, the property owner is requesting to extend it for the final two years that's allowed on that use permit.
So, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure, sure.
So if I recall, I believe I was on the planning commission at the time, and we did a memorandum of understanding and to, um, advising that this memorandum of understanding was so that they could have time to start, uh, beginning to think of a development in mind and, and that was in 2017 as well, Ms. Mothersen?
Yes, that's correct. So this was sort of to be a, a temporary use while they considered future development at that site. And since that time, there have been numerous conversations with the property owner. They have expressed a interest in developing. You may recall that they did submit a proposal for our property, um, or the, the Housing Finance Agency's property at Carter and Martin. They submitted a proposal to master plan their property in addition to our property. The, the finance agency selected another developer, but, uh, Mr. Bill Viera representing Si West has indicated a willingness to work with the selected developer, which was Bridge and Deca. So, um, in the meantime, however, he would like to, um, have an economic use of his property while he explores development potential on his site.
Has there been any movement at all or like one other than that?
Well, right now, the, the city staff is negotiating with the developer. We're preparing an exclusive negotiating agreement to present to council, uh, with the selected developer. Um, once that's, um, approved and in play, then the developers, uh, the selected developer and Si West and Cal Palace will be working together to come up with some sort of development proposal.
So he's asking for another two years?
Correct.
And then this is probably like the third time for extension or?
No, this would be his first request for an extension.
For the extension from the MOU.
So the first approval was in 2017, the council granted three years and then with an option to extend two years. He's making the request to extend that addition two years. There are no more offers of extension beyond that period. So after that two years, if he want, if, if development weren't happening and he wanted to continue, he'd have to apply for a new use permit.
Okay, I yield to my colleagues.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Dejivani. Um, it says for new cars, uh, who is putting new cars there?
Um, I believe it's a Honda dealership. It's a Honda dealership. If you may recall, we added a condition that they could increase capacity if there were a Daly City vehicle, uh, sales business that wanted to use the site. So we approved a certain capacity. Um, Bill Viera at the time had acknowledged that he had reached out to, uh, Daly City dealerships. They weren't interested at the time.
Okay.
But to make sure that there was an option in the future should a, a Daly City dealership want to use the site, the council had a caveat that the capacity could be increased on the site.
Outstanding. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, basically you've answered the question and you went right to the point and, you know, we have a concern, especially for the businesses here in Daly City and for Si West Properties to, um, cooperate and to offer that, uh, really means a lot. Uh, I had one other question. If development does come, I'm being optimistic, within two years or before two years, I doubt if it will, but if it does, will this, this agreement will subordinate or disappear for the development? In other words, it will not supersede the development plans that we have coming later? If it should happen within the two years?
Right. I mean, the developer is always going to choose the, what, what the best economic path is for their property. So if the development was approved, it could happen before the two years, I imagine they would seek that. But, you know, just having done this for 20 years, I think having, you know, a building permit issued from today to within two years is highly optimistic and.
Okay.
Probably not likely, given the site area that we have to consider for, um, review.
One last question before Councilmember Buena Ventura. Uh, is this the same property where commute.org is storing their vehicles or that's more to the north side next to Si West property? I know commute.org stores their commute vehicles there.
The applicant doesn't think that sounds familiar, so it must be another site.
Okay, good, that's all I have. Uh, Councilmember Buena Ventura?
Um, so I guess, uh, my question is, um, is the, so they're going to use the space for the storage of the vehicles. Do we get any revenue from that use?
Yes, so when the city, um, the city requires a business license from anybody who's renting both commercial and residential property. So in the meantime, we are getting, um, business license taxes from the rental of the property. So the city does get some fiscal benefit from utilization of the property.
But not any sort of sale of any of those vehicles?
No, it's not, but this wouldn't be the, the point-of-sale location, but we would get the rental business license.
Okay. Um, so I think where I'm at on this is, I, I think I share the concerns of, uh, Councilmember Dejivani and Mayor Sylvester. I think at the last time this came up, I actually voted against having this, uh, being used as a parking lot. And the reasons that I believe that I gave was, in, in accordance with, I think, their thoughts also, was the impact on moving this along and developing this property. Uh, I thought that it would be, um, no incentive to move this along and, and build because we need to get the Bay Shore area built, we need to get the community, um, what it deserves and needs, and I think that's why I voted against it. However, I will say that I have seen some positive, uh, movement in that direction, given the recent, um, dealings we've had in, in putting forward entertaining proposals on what we're going to do with that site. So I think perhaps a good compromise would be if, um, I defer to my counsel, was instead of giving them a two-year, maybe we give them a one-year because they can always come back and renew it again. And by making it a one-year, we still are sort of pushing everybody to get this site developed. And, um, you know, we're not saying we're not going to renew it in two, in an, an additional year after one, but at least it keeps it moving forward. So that would be my suggestion and see what your, whatever else thinks.
Any additional comments?
Um, I would, I would go with the one-year.
Okay.
Any other suggestions?
I just, uh, I see both points.
Yeah, me too.
Uh, both sides. And, uh, Tatum, when you said that if nothing happens within the two years, then they'll have to begin the process over again to come and apply for a new use permit. But I do recall, uh, Councilmember Buena Ventura's, uh, point and it sounds like to me, I mean, when he made this point last time, I mean, uh, being the dissenting vote. But I think we've come to a happy medium and he's willing to change his mind, but he's willing to change his mind if we go one-year. So, uh, I'll defer to, uh, Madam City Attorney. On the agenda, we have before us a contract for a two-year extension. Can modifications be made to change that to one-year based upon the council's wishes?
This is a use permit. Uh, the request is a maximum of two years. If the council desires to extend it one year and have him come back for the additional year, they can do that.
So I make that motion to, um.
Uh, shall we hear from, uh, I think we should give the applicant, uh, a chance to speak and provide some thoughts as well. Thank you. Mr. Viera?
Okay, Ms. Mothersen.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Uh, thank you, Tatum. I, I appreciate, um, the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I am requesting two years if it's at all possible. Um, hopefully over the past number of years, I've demonstrated a real willingness to try to get something done on the property. We've submitted in the, uh, in the RFP process, we are looking forward to engaging, uh, the parties when they're ready to talk to us, both about the Cal Palace and about, um, the, uh, the housing parcel itself. Um, there is no doubt in our mind that we look forward to a higher and better use. It's not an economically, um, sustained type of use for the property out there today. It's okay for us, it helps us carry, with the carry costs, um, but ultimately we do want to develop and we've been trying to develop for a number of years. So if you wouldn't mind, we would appreciate the two years, it just gives us a little longer commitment with the tenant. Um, I will tell you, in our lease with the tenant, we have the ability to terminate early if for some reason it just came together tomorrow. Um, it would be wonderful and we would welcome that. Um, but at least this way, we do get a little bit of a, a term where we don't have to worry about coming back in, in another 12 months. So, um, respectfully, I would request a little more time.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Viera? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Viera. I know something was coming to mind, but I just can't remember, so. All right.
So I'm making the motion to, um, make it a one-year extension. Um, I don't think there's anything to lose by making it one year because, um, and I think, and, and I'm, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but they should worry about coming back in another year because they should have some thing in place, they should have, I want to see some movement in getting the Bay Shore neighborhood done. And there really isn't, if, if things happen, then great. And if it doesn't happen, at least he'll be back here. I, I don't necessarily mean you, but some presentation will be made as to why development wasn't happening. And that's when we can reassess and evaluate it again and decide, do we give it another year? So because I don't think there's really much, there's anything to lose and we have everything to gain by keeping the pressure on, I think that's, uh, a reasonable, um, compromise.
All right, thank you, um, Mr. Buena Ventura. So there's a motion on the floor and we're going to have further discussion, but we must act on the motion first. There's a motion on the floor to modify, uh, from two years to one year. Before this can move forward, I would need a second. On the motion for one year, there a second? I will second.
I'm just trying to be curious.
Uh, so we have a first and a second. Before we take a vote, further discussion.
No.
Member Dejivani?
I'm just trying to be courteous.
So, we have a first and a second. Before we take a vote, further discussion.
No.
Member De Giovanni?
No, just want to say that with Mr. Buena Ventura, but he has made, and I do appreciate his communication with Ms. Motherside, so that's duly noted.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All right. I'll make a comment. I'm trying to put yourself in the shoes of Si West as well, Mr. Viera, so please don't think that I haven't thought about that as well. But that neighborhood is suffering and we need more retail out there. We need more homes out there. And I know you've met with us before in the past and also said that Si West wasn't definitely interested in doing something, whether it be a new target or post offices or whether it be a bank. But it's languishing and we don't see anything happening. True, we have developers underway who's going to be working on that property. And just as a matter of fact, I believe Governor Gavin Newsom just declared state property, which is close to yours, at the Cow Palace, that they're going to give it up and they want mental and homeless housing.
Yeah, homeless shelters.
So, it's, the inevitable is coming. So, that's all I have for my comments. Are there any other further comments before we take a vote?
Nothing. Just I agree with the Bay Shore. The Bay Shore has been, we all agree with that and they need it. So, and I know that it's in the interest of that.
All right. Any further comments? Hearing none. You know, I'm going to do a voice vote on this. A regular vote would do it? Okay. Because there's a consent item, right? Regular vote or roll call? Okay, that's what I meant, voice vote. All right. May I have a roll call, please? This is on the motion to modify from two years to one year.
Ms. De Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
All right. So, the motion passes for item number four on the consent agenda. And that is the complete, that's the end of the consent agenda. Okay. Moving on to item number seven. Captain Christensen, come on up, please. And are there any cards? I haven't seen any cards tonight.
There are some.
There are some? Oh, come in, okay. All right. Item number seven, authorizing a total of 10 automatic license plate readers to the police department, ALPR. Captain, why are you up there? You, you comfortable up there?
Would you like me to sit down, sir?
Please, you know, so I can watch your hands. Good evening, Captain.
Good evening. How are you?
Great.
So, it's been two years, but we're back for automated license plate readers. So, before you this evening, it's a staff report requesting the allowance of up to 10 automated license plate readers for use by the police department in our vehicle fleet consisting of both patrol cars and trailers. Last month, on January 27th, council approved this current time and place for the public hearing about the proposed request, which is compliance for California Civil Code for automated license plate reader technology and procurement. Just as a refresher for the community, ALPR technology utilizes camera and software to automatically scan license plate at a high rate of speed and then cross-checks those license plates against law enforcement-specific databases, checking for missing and wanted persons, stolen and wanted vehicles, registration compliance issues, as well as being a resource in criminal investigations. This technology improves patrol and investigative efficiency as well as a general safety and as the officer no longer needs to divide their attention while manually entering information into their mobile computers. An audible tone alerts the officer to any license plate match to a law enforcement database query, which the officer must then confirm before taking any enforcement action. Currently, the police department has four automated license plate reader systems affixed to mobile enforcement vehicles. This proposal would allow the department to purchase and deploy up to 10 ALPRs as funding becomes available. These ALPR systems would be deployed in the field on a regular basis as part of standard patrol duties. Purchase price and associated ALPR installation can fluctuate in cost depending on camera quantity and installation platform. A standard three-camera vehicle-mounted system can average about $20,000. All funds for future purchases would be taken from asset forfeiture accounts or from supplemental law enforcement services funds. There will be no cash match or other cost to the city. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information. Did you have any?
Thank you, Captain Christensen. Any comments?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, the device itself, is it just going to be on the police cars and trailers or will it also be at stationary locations like at parking lots or other, like at a light, attached to a light pole? Or is it just going to be in the cars?
So, this request is solely for mobile vehicles and trailers. This does not include any fixed ALPR locations, which we currently do not have any fixed.
Okay.
I mean, we would definitely come and request and open that to pull the comment, should that be of interest.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a, so, a question. Will, it will also record, will it be connected to the immigration database?
It is not. All of our ALPR data is sent to the Northern California Regional Intelligence Center, which houses all Bay Area ALPR information. And they have a specific clause that none of their information can be accessed, requested or shared for any immigration purposes.
Thank you.
Part of their NICRIC policy, which is available online through our website as well.
Just one more. I know that we already had some success with the ones that we, I think we only have one, Mr. Mayor?
Four.
Four, four. And that they have been able to, I believe, identify stolen vehicles and things. So, it's really primarily for that, Mr. Captain Christensen?
Yes.
For many uses, but that's one of them. Been able to find stolen vehicles and...
Yeah, stolen vehicles and really, it's a great investigative tool. So, it helped catch a bank robbery was one of the more recent cases. We had a bank robbery over in the western portion of Daly City. And the bank robber, while leaving, was driving a stolen vehicle. So, when they drove by an automated license plate reader, we got an inquiry hit on the stolen vehicle, which gave the officers responding to the bank robbery, same time and place, a vehicle description and a license plate to look for. And within minutes, they've located the vehicle and arrested the suspect with all the, you know, US currency notes and everything. And it was a serial bank robber from the western coast.
Thank you.
So, and we also utilize it in a lot of different areas where there's crime trends, whether it be residential burglaries or, you know, the challenges that we face with auto burglaries and commercial areas. We can utilize that technology in those areas, because frequently, the suspects and vehicles are repeat throughout the Bay Area. And so, a lot of times, they get identified in another city across the bay or some other portion of the Bay Area. We can enter that information in the database, so if that vehicle is ever seen entering our area, wherever that automated license plate reader is, it'll notify us that there's a potential vehicle associated to those types of crimes.
Yeah, or abduction of a child or anything like that, or human trafficking. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Captain Christensen, a couple of questions. How many officers work on a given shift in a vehicle? How many in each vehicle?
Typically, one.
Okay. The reason why I bring that up, because a solo unit, he or she has to do so much work. I remember my days as a police officer, we worked two. And what we would have to do is we go to the computer, we print up the hot sheet, and we bring the hot sheet in the car and put it up on the dash. And as you drive around town, doing about 10 miles per hour so that you can see the license plate.
Wow.
Then you look at the last three numbers, 033, and you got to look for 033 on the hot sheet. Can you imagine if one officer did that? And believe me, when I tried it when I was a single unit, I almost hit a car. This technology in the police department has come a long way. I pride myself that if you steal a car in San Francisco, we'll find it in two days, because that's how important it was to look at that hot sheet. With this technology, all you do is just drive. And it will beep you and tell you the car is stolen. And as we move forward, one fair warning to those out there. If you steal a car, don't come to Daly City, because we'll find it. So, thank you very much, Captain Christensen. And any further comments?
I will mark.
Yes, Dr. Rod?
How secure is the APLR? Is there people that can actually like steal identification? Like if there was like a certain reader and an internet person can hack into the system? Has there been anything that has been discussed nationally?
So, from speaking with the director of NICRIC and also watching presentations from him as well, it doesn't sound like there's ever been any intrusion into their database. It's SEGNS compliant, which is the highest compliance you can have for all law enforcement database records. And it's, any access is only through law enforcement entities. And there has to be multiple layers of security, both with individual login through police department-based access. And then there's also additional login criteria for accessing their database. So, currently, if I understand correctly, it has not been intrusion up to this point. But...
Thank you.
I'd like to add a little bit more. CGIS, Criminal Justice Information Systems. Whenever law enforcement access the data, you have to log in with your credentials. If you don't have the proper credentials, you cannot even access the information. This system is only designed to bring up the information about a particular vehicle, especially if it's stolen. So, I remember in the days, folks would just run vehicles nonchalantly, run OJ Simpson's plate, but you had no business doing it. And nowadays, you would get in trouble for doing that. So, believe me, the information is very secure and it is tracked who accesses the data. Okay, any further comments? Okay. So, on the motion for authorizing a total of 10 more automated license plate readers in the police department, may I have a motion, please? Oh, it's a public hearing. I'd like to open it up, request a motion to open up the public hearing.
So, moved.
So, moved is a second.
Second.
We have a second. Since I have no cards, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion?
Second.
Second. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. All right. On the motion, may I have a motion to accept the 10 automated license plate readers for the police department?
Motion to accept the 10 automated license plate readers?
Have a motion is a second.
Second.
There's a second. First and a second. Any further discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. De Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, Captain Christensen. All right. Okay, item number eight. This is a use permit, UPR-6-19-14076, and design review, DR-6-19-1477. Mixed-use apartment building at 493 Eastmore Avenue. And Mr. Lunkhausen's issue is? Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Lunkhausen.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This is a request by Core Affordable Housing to construct a 72-unit affordable mixed-use building at the northwest intersection of Eastmore Avenue and Sullivan Avenue. A use permit and design review are required. This is the site location, again, northwest corner of Sullivan and Eastmore. The site is in the Sullivan corridor-specific plan area and is a designated service commercial in the Sullivan-specific plan, requiring a use permit for a mixed-use building. This is a photo of the site looking northward from Eastmore Avenue. Site's previously a gasoline service station that's been out of commission or actually deconstructed about 20 years ago. In 2016, the city council may recall, there was a approval for a five-story, 34-unit condominium building, mixed-use also, approved at the site. It was never built due to the financial infeasibility of constructing the parking structure that was underneath the building. There are adjacent properties or apartments to the west of the subject property. A vacant office building to the north. This has actually been approved, this property in particular has been approved for apartment use, but it has also not been constructed. So, this particular site is a .34-acre vacant lot, formerly a Shell service station. The applicant's proposing 35 studio apartments, 36 one-bedroom apartments and one, two-bedroom apartments for 72 total units. The site density would be about 200 units to the acre. This particular project is unique in that it provides 100% affordable units, so all of the units would be affordable and would be subject to a 55-year deed restriction. This affordability in particular qualifies the project for some reduced parking, and we'll go over that in a moment. Included in the project is about 1,200 square feet of street-level retail and office space. And the project also includes the reconfiguration of the northwest corner of Sullivan and Eastmore to remove the existing southbound free right turn movement. So, right now, if you're traveling southbound on Sullivan Avenue and you want to turn onto westbound Eastmore, there is the ability to do that without stopping and, or yielding to the other traffic coming from Eastmore, westbound Eastmore. This project, and we can look at the site plan, would remove that free right turn movement by reducing the curb radius at the corner. This is proposed and required by the city as a means to making the intersection more safe for pedestrian use. And this actually shows that the current configuration, you can get in this lane and make a free right yielding to westbound traffic. Here's another picture of it. And the project, as required by the city, would eliminate that free right and replace it with some landscaping. So, there would still be a dedicated right-hand turn lane, but all traffic would have to stop. So, we want to make the council aware that this project includes this work in the public right-of-way. So, these slides show the proposed configuration floor by floor. The first floor is largely just the commercial space accessible at the Sullivan Avenue entrance. And this is, again, about 1,200 square feet of commercial or office space. There's a condition of approval that's been added that this space be improved somewhat to make it more leasable. We have had situations where the tenant space has not been approved enough to make it leasable. And we want to make sure that, for example, the bathroom or electrical has been added to make it a truly leasable space in what is to be a mixed-use building. So, moving to the second floor, these are the parking levels, the parking level, and primarily is what the entrance is at Eastmore Avenue into the parking garage. Third floor is 12 apartments, courtyard and community room. Fourth floor is 15 apartments and a fitness room. The fifth through seventh floors are 15 apartments plus laundry facilities for each, or for the units in the building. This is a perspective rendering of the building from the Eastmore and Sullivan intersection. The staff report to the city council indicated that one of the issues that arose at the planning commission was that the colors of the building, and there was a condition of approval, added to the city council staff report, and the city council would act upon making a little bit more of a vibrant, warmer color palette for the building. There was a comment that the colors here were a little too sullen and needed to have a little more vibrancy and warmth. This is another rendering from Eastmore Avenue. So, yes, it's true, the number of floors here is increasing from five to seven from the previous proposal. In the context, however, of what's around it, we do have some, you know, taller apartment building next door to the west. This is a good location, though, for some height, given its adjacency to freeway and non-adjacency, for example, to single-family residential. So, there is no single-family residential anywhere near this building, at least not adjacent to it. You have to travel more west into the neighborhood to the west and southwest. We provided a slide overview... We provided a slide overviewing the project affordability. Again, all of the units in this building would be affordable, subject to a 55-year deed restriction. The city has approved an affordable housing plan for the project. Seven of the 72 units would be affordable to incomes at less than 70% of the annual median income, three studio apartments and four one-bedroom apartments. Current rents for studio apartments would range between $1,200 and $1,450, and current rent for one-bedroom apartments would range between $1,350 and $1,650. So we wanted to provide what the affordability meant, again, for the units that are deed restricted in the affordable housing plan. The state legislature, a couple of years ago, adopted Assembly Bill 744, which granted a parking reduction, and this project does qualify for that reduction. And based on calculations provided in the State of California Health and Safety Code and consistent with the rent limits published by the Department of Housing and Community Development, this project does qualify for a parking reduction. And we'll go over what that parking reduction is in a moment. The project, because of its affordability, also qualifies for density bonus law concessions. The reduction in open space to 74 square feet from 150 is requested by the developer, as well as the, a request to increase the maximum floor area ratio from the project site from 3.0 to 4.41, which would enable development of the apartment building at the proposed density. This slide provides the overview, as I mentioned before, of the Assembly Bill 744 parking reduction and actually all of the parking reductions. So parking, again, would be 36 spaces in the second-floor parking garage. So 95 spaces are normally required, so this is a pretty sizable parking reduction. However, Assembly Bill 744 reduces the parking to 0.5 spaces per unit for all rental units affordable to lower-income families and located within one-half mile of a major transit stop. So in this case, the Colma-Bart station is that major transit stop. And again, the project has been deemed to be affordable to lower-income families stipulated in the state health and safety code. So with the reduction is 30, the calculation for 72 apartments at a half-space per unit is 36 parking spaces. Four parking spaces are required for the retail or office use, based on the parking ratio of one parking space per 300. Therefore, 40 parking spaces total being required. However, because the project is mixed-use, the city zoning ordinance does allow for a 20% parking reduction, equating their 4 to 32 parking spaces in total. And 32 are provided. Six of these 32 spaces are made in the project site plan to be accessible to the public for the retail and office uses. So any gated spaces would be behind six of the 32 parking spaces. So that's an overview of the parking reduction. The project is consistent with, again, the Sullivan corridor-specific plan. A use permit's required, that is the reason for tonight's public hearing before the City Council. Any uses that are allowed on parcels designated retail and office commercial in the Sullivan-specific plan are allowed on this parcel, subject to use permit approval. Any residential uses are allowed, and this, of course, is a residential use. The specific plan contains objectives encouraging additional residential development that reinforces existing neighborhoods and is within walking distance of the Colma-Bart station. And the general plan actually has numerous policies supporting regulatory incentives for developers who construct high-density mixed-use development, particularly those development proposals that contain affordability. And again, this project is 100% affordable, and it's also within close proximity to public transit, namely, the BART system. The project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. It qualifies for all the exemptions identified in the CEQA guidelines, section 15, 332, in field development. The project site served by existing infrastructure. It's on a site that's less than five acres, as well as qualifies in various other ways for this categorical exemption. The planning commission reviewed the proposed project on February 4th and recommended that the City Council approve the use permit and design review. If there are any questions, the staff's happy to answer those. The developer is also, representative from Core is also present tonight and can answer any questions, as well as the architect. Should the council have any questions, have the architect?
Thank you, Mr. Lunkhausen. Is there any comments from my colleagues? And we do have a few cards, and also we do have the developer here to answer any questions. But did anyone have any questions from Mr. Lunkhausen?
I actually have a quick question. I remember the past proposal when I was on planning commission, it meant to build on top of the current foundation. Is this meant to just demolish the whole foundation and then rebuild over the current lot?
You might be thinking of the project right next door at 1784 Sullivan.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this particular site, yeah, there's nothing on it.
Bad memory, sorry.
I'll just make a comment, and developer who's in the audience, if you can take note. My, first of all, 100% affordable is definitely top and high priority for me. I do understand the fact of TOD, Transit Oriented Development, excellent place for it. But 72 units, 32 parking spaces, basically a half of a parking space per unit, I feel is not really going to work. You made up a good, you made a good point that there aren't hardly any nearby residences, or single-family homes, rather, with the exception of the apartment building that is further west. I have a concern about the parking, and I know they do have, with these lifts. And I don't know, maybe make that parking in the first floor a little bit higher so they can accommodate the lift, so we can get more parking in there. But what I see probably is going to happen is folks are going to probably leave their vehicles down at the CVS, or maybe at night when there's no, at the car wash where, unless they chain that up. And it's just going to be very difficult. So that's a concern I have. Hopefully, that can be answered later, because I see that this developer has taken advantage of every... Don't get me wrong, I love the building. I mean, I would like to move into that building. But to get the density bonus and to get these other bonuses, and if you put retail, you got to put six parking spots. I mean, okay, good, but I love the project, but my concern is going to be about parking. Okay, so that's just my comment, Mr. Lunkhausen. What I can do now, did anybody want the developer to come up and speak to anything before we open up the public hearing? No, you know what? Let's open it up to public hearing now, and that the developer and yourself, Mr. Lunkhausen, can hear what some of the public is saying, if they have any concerns, and then we can go from there. So I request a motion to open up the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing?
First is a second.
Second.
We have a second. All right, public hearing is now open. All those in favor? Now, there we go, okay. I have three cards here. So there's no particular order, so if you were first, you may be last. Okay, first one is Dahel Go, San Leandro, representing the Japanese Community Youth Council. Ms. Go? You're right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Alex Melendez, representing HLC, which is the Housing Leadership Council. Good evening, Alex. Boy, you're just everywhere, aren't you?
I was going to say, I'm lucky how often I'm coming here. It's a good sign. Hello, Mayor Sylvester and honorable City Council and City staff. My name's Alex Melendez, and I am representing the Housing Leadership Council. We're a nonprofit that works with communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes. As an organization that seeks to create the most amount of affordable housing at the deepest levels of affordability, the 493 East Moore Avenue proposal has our full support. The opportunity to provide low, very low, and extremely low-income homes in a county that is really struggling to produce them shouldn't be delayed. It is really clear that this proposal, is it clear with this proposal that Daly City does not want to be one of those areas. These 71 affordable homes will become an example of creating equity and enhancing Daly City's current community and protecting diversity. What you have before you is a prime example of how to use underutilized parcels when land is scarce. The proposal maximizes the potential public benefit of the land by creating the most amount of public good. And as I said during the planning commission, it'll mean more than just that. It'll mean more than examples and talking points to the families and individuals who will end up calling it home. People will live independent lives, cook for themselves, and community members will have a place to call home in Daly City. We urge you to move forward with Core's proposed affordable housing without delay in order to reach the desirable future sooner. HLC would once again like to thank the Daly City Council and City staff for your leadership on affordable housing. Daly City is a great place to live, why not make more of it? Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Mr. Carl Hurtell. Good evening, sir, and you, oh, you're a developer?
I'm with the applicant, yes.
Okay, affordable housing. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council. My name's Carl Hurtell, I'm with the applicant, Core Affordable Housing. We're a local affordable housing developer with 30 years of experience in the Bay Area. We've developed about 3,000 or more affordable apartments over the last 30 years. We recently completed our Menlo Park Veterans Development near Willow Road, and we're anticipating breaking ground on our Millbrae project coming up later this year. First, I'd like to thank staff for working with us throughout this project, throughout this process. And I'd like to thank the council for considering our project and request that you follow both staff and planning commission's recommendation to approve our use permit and design review this evening. We do have one request, though, that condition number two, which gives design review approval for the first year only, for the initial term of the approval. We request that that be two years. The reason being for that is that the affordable housing finance process isn't reasonably done in one year. Once you set up your tax credit, the tax credit process alone takes six to eight months, and before you begin that, you have to have the rest of the financing in place. And so that would leave us four months from approval to get that financing in place. And the timeframe is just unusually short for an affordable project. And so we'd request that that number two be changed to two years, rather than one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Hurtell?
Well, as to the parking issue, Chris would like to say a word about that.
I remember you.
That would be me. I get to be the parking guy tonight.
Okay, and what's your name, sir?
My name is Chris Neal. I'm with the Core Companies as well.
Okay.
I'm one of the principals there. Mr. Mayor, council member, thank you for having us tonight. We were actually here in front of the council, seemed like just a few months ago, I think it was late last year, for the Carter Martin site. So we're very pleased, we're disappointed that we weren't selected, but we were very impressed with the selection, the options that the city had. And so we're very excited to hear about that and see that going forward. Mr. Mayor, you raise a great question about parking, and it's challenging. Parking requirements are changing dramatically as we speak with the technology. But one of the challenging parts, when it comes down to people, is when you find a development site, the first thing you have to do is not find out where the homes you could build, but you've got to place the parking. And many of the state goals to help encourage the development of affordable housing are really espousing what Daly City possesses, both in location, infrastructure, and the proximity to parking. For the total parking spaces, part of the plan, right, so it's a .5 parking ratio, as you had identified. While it seems like a very low ratio, we have done this before in other communities. It's, we have a project in Menlo Park on the VA campus for homeless veterans. That was parked at a .5 parking ratio. Our project in Millbrae, so we're working with a market rate developer. We have been charged with developing the affordable housing project at the Millbrae BART station. So that's an 80-unit project. In the parking lot, if you could visualize the Millbrae BART station, then the familiarity across from the parking garage, we have a five-story building comprised of 80 apartments there, and that as well is parked at a .5 parking ratio. We have a project in San Jose, near the Berriessa BART station. So that BART station has been constructed, it's not operating yet. And so that was a challenge of developing a project in anticipation of the regional transit coming. That was parked at a .65 parking ratio. And even though the transit's not there, there's good bus infrastructure. The parking has been sufficient for the residents. That's an affordable project for seniors, whose incomes range from 30% AMI up to 60% AMI. So based on our experience, we feel confident that while the .5 parking ratio does seem low compared to typical standards in other communities and maybe throughout Daly City, given the affordability that we're targeting, we're targeting households, you know, making from $20,000 a year up to $70,000 a year, trying to get rents between $800 to $1,000, up to $1,600 a month, and designing the project to incent residents to use, to select to live here because of its proximity to great transit. It's a challenge, but part of the way that I think the affordable housing industry is trying to make a dent in the affordable housing crisis, or the housing crisis that we're facing, is targeting quality, high-density housing near these transit locations. Now, if we were, you know, a mile or two miles away from the station, we wouldn't even be proposing something like this. A key is to have it within 500, with a half a mile of the Colma-Bart station, with ample bicycle parking, and we will try to be recruiting or being attractive to residents who value being near the transit.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, entertain any comments from my colleagues?
I have a comment.
Councilmember Buena Ventura?
So I'm supporting this project as it is, and I'm interested also in changing to the two years that you requested, depending on what staff has to say about that. I guess my first question is, I really, I mean, I love the project. I think the 100% affordable is exactly what Daly City needs. I'm wondering, however, is why did you stop at 72? Why, could you have gone higher and built more on that spot?
So from a constructability, so I'll answer, I'll answer part of the question. I'll ask maybe Michael if he could help me with another part of it. I can't answer the technical about whether the zoning code would have allowed more. As you're probably very well aware of, the cost to build housing, the cost to build anything in this area is extraordinarily expensive. And so there are different thresholds in construction types that once you maximize one construction type, you only don't go to the next level, you tend to go to an even higher level. So this building has been designed to optimize wood frame construction. So we have, we are going the tallest building we can over a, so there's roughly a two-story podium garage at the ground level. There's a commercial along Sullivan, and then another, so it reads two stories along Sullivan, and then five stories of wood frame. If we added another level, so it's a long-winded answer to your question. If you add another level, you would have to go to the entire building being concrete, which changes the whole cost-per-unit structure. And when you add one floor, you really want to go up to the next several other floors to get that scalability or efficiency from changing the construction type. So that's why we optimized it at the five stories of wood frame. We did work with Betsy from the Housing Department to try to define the unit types. And while there certainly was a desire for larger families to kind of optimize it, we ended up with this mix of studios and one-bedrooms. We did explore whether to do it age-restricted to seniors. We did explore whether to do it age-restricted to seniors, and the thought process in speaking with Betsy was, by not age-restricting it, you make it affordable to a broader group of people. While you're still affordable to seniors, it opens up to virtually every age range. And one thing we learned in preparing for the Carter Martin RFP is I think the AMI range between, as a low 130 up to 60%, that income level represents roughly 40 to 50% of the AMI distribution in the city of Daly City. So we're really trying to find a way to target a project that could appeal to the broadest range of those who live and work in Daly City. So that's how we ended up at what's in front of you tonight.
Okay. And then just to confirm what I was thinking, which is regard to the parking and what the mayor had concerns with, I was thinking that the reason why the parking ratio is low and why it makes sense is because if you're near to a transit like the BART, you're less likely to want to have a car or own a car, and therefore the demand, the consumer will adjust their behavior so that more parking perhaps is not needed, and they'll, they want to use public transportation like BART and not have to deal with all the parking. Is that sort of the thinking also?
That's the thinking, that's our experience in some of our other projects, but it kind of comes back down to, for those who want parking, it would be on a lottery basis, but it's really trying to market and attract those who value the proximity to the transit, right? So rather than spending the money on the automobile and others, between bike parking and other incentives, to try to encourage that, the tenant mix will be those who value the proximity to BART. And there's another element about the AMI levels, you know, when you're dealing with $20,000 a year, up to $50,000 a year, and the broader age range, I mean, there is a demographic shift on how people get around these days, and there is an element that at those low AMIs, at those demographics and age, given the proximity to transit, they don't, they don't value or need automobiles as much as, I'd feel uncomfortable without my car. I think as with age, there's a different experience with auto transit.
And then the final question I had is, is it possible to enforce a covenant or restriction that the occupants of the complex not have a certain number of cars, or is there a restriction you can impose?
So I don't know of anything. I don't know if you can or cannot make a restriction on what residents could or could not do like that, so I don't know, to be honest with you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a quick question on, how do we determine who gets to live in these, is there going to be a lottery process? And then also, is there a priority for Daly City residents?
So currently, I don't believe there's a priority for Daly City residents, but typically it's through a lottery.
So how do we determine the criteria?
So in our past experience, and I'm going to use our project in Menlo Park for veterans as an example, the land was contributed by, it was on federal land by the VA, and so their desired expectations was, since we contributed the land, it's on our VA campus, we want it to be veterans. What happened is, Carl was nice in saying there are two or three funding sources, sometimes you need five or six. I'm proud to say, actually, we went in front of the county, we already have a commitment of about $250,000 from the county for the project, so it meets all of their requirements. As we get further along the readiness, they are definitely one of the sources that we would go and pursue. But what happened was, when we went and in our Menlo Park example, the city contributed some funds, the city's funds had a requirement, so it was the city's, I think their funds were through impact fees, and so their funds had a requirement for the live or work locally preference. And so what we had to do was negotiate with the VA, because they had the expectations of 100%, and so at the end of the day, as the percent of dollars were contributed, we ended up having the different preferences go forward along with how the dollars went into the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
This actually might be Michael. How close is a Samtrans bus? Do they go Eastmore that way?
I believe so, I believe so. There is a route that goes east-west on Eastmore.
And also, do we, when we did our bicycle, do we do our bicycle lanes adjacent to that when we go down, like towards the Comba BART, to where people can ride a bike?
That I don't know. I don't know if the overpass is wide enough for bicyclists.
No, okay, because I know that they provided a spot for people, I remember, if that's correct, at the, in the housing, for people for bicycles? Is there a spot?
There is, yes. There's a bicycle locker room.
Bicycle locker room, right?
There is a bicycle locker room. As another example, at our Millbrae project, one of the funding sources we applied for was the state cap and trade from HCD, and so with that project, we were able to receive about $11 million of funds to support the housing. In addition, we got $3 million of funds that are going to go to the city of Millbrae to improve their bike paths and pedestrian access. So, you know, affordable housing as a publicly financed endeavor tied to transit, there are a lot of resources out there to try to encourage high-density housing near transit and improve connectivity. So we would pursue as many of those avenues as possible to make it as connected as possible for the residents.
It's a great project, and the only other thing is, I know, because it's, Core's done this, and you've done some great projects, is that, is labor in any part of your projects?
Yeah, so our project in Millbrae has a union requirement. I think typically, in my experience, it'll probably be a Davis Bacon or prevailing wage requirement. Usually the funding, usually one of the funding requirements triggers Davis Bacon, so the vast majority of it will be prevailing wage or union requirement.
You guys have a good reputation, so I want to commend you on that as well, and thank you for being in Daly City.
Thank you.
Really, and thank you, Michael, and for working with them. I'm sure it's a great project to work on.
It is. With regard to the time extension, the city council would essentially be granting a two-year, they can, the council can grant a time extension tonight on top of the one-year code mandated, so two years.
So we can, okay.
Thank you so much. Okay, here we go. First of all, I've seen your rendition on the Millbrae project, and I think it's a project that other cities should emulate. I think it's a beautiful project, I really love it. The question I have for staff is, because I know you folks have gotten tax credits throughout and different sources, to answer councilmember Dasmak Boal's question about giving priority to folks here in Daly City, I know that it's against real estate law to discriminate, it has to be open to everyone, with the exception, if Daly City has provided any money, and along with the money that they've provided, they can add a request for additional conditions, such as you made mention. So my question is, has Daly City provided any funds to this project? Or will Daly City be providing any funds from the Housing Finance Trust Fund?
The city has not today committed to funding this project.
And has a developer thought about going through Daly City? Yes.
As you know, many developers and affordable housing developers, we're not shy of asking local publications for funds.
That's why I beg the question.
So I've had several great conversations with Betsy, who has shown great deal of interest in the project, but informed us of the process, and there are other projects, and there are some funding sources coming up. So I look forward to, following a successful evening tonight, re-engaging with Betsy, so there will definitely be a formal request to coordinate with Betsy. And in many ways, the county, you know, one of the things that came out of the county's request for the project is they made a commitment, but they also like to look and see if a commitment from the city. So I'd say, the city working with these density bonuses already goes towards helping meet some of the county's commitments, but additional dollar funding and then allowing it to really be, you know, according to fair housing, targeting those who live and work in Daly City, I think would be a win-win-win.
Okay. Let me stay there.
Happy stay.
Millbrae, how much from the city? Lottery, Daly City residents? Okay. Daly City has enjoyed, thanks to staff, in enforcing parking ordinances in the sense of new developments that's being built. For instance, if I'm not mistaken, if you build a home of 2,000 square feet, we require four parking spaces. San Francisco, if you build a home, they require .25. So we've enjoyed that here in Daly City. Now, you made mention about the folks who would probably be moving in, and you even had thoughts about seniors moving in. Well, I know for a fact that at the top of the hill, new development of 204 units, what I had a problem with was the parking, 55 parking spaces. So if you do the math, that translates into .37. Your project is a .5, but it's not all seniors. To say whether it's low income or affordable, those who value to use transportation, it's not to say that they won't own any vehicles. You're probably making the assumption, probably, that if you're low income, you don't own a vehicle, or you shouldn't own one, but we have no control over that. So I just wanted to bring that point up as well, because I know parking is going to be tough. I don't, I don't know how Millbrae's going to turn out, but you got the Millbrae BART station, but Daly City folks love their parking, and I think that's, .5 is too low for density. I'd be more comfortable with .66 or at least 2/3, and it's just my thought. You know, I just wish I was part of planning, and I probably would have said, could you go back to the drawing board and see if you can increase the parking? So, again, I love the project, but I just wanted to make that comment. Okay?
Appreciate that.
All right, thank you so much. All right, any further comments before we move on?
No, I'd like to address the mayor's question, so those things like that, like especially at this point, it's not feasible for, when he was suggesting the .66.
Well, in reviewing a project like this, the city staff primarily looks to state law, and in the case of this, the state legislature did adopt Assembly Bill 744, and we follow that parking requirement essentially.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we ready to move?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Buena Ventura.
I make the motion to approve the project as is, with the exception of adding the two years that requested.
Second.
You said, with the exception, in other words, to modify, to include.
Right.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the floor first, and a second. Any further discussion? And roll call, please.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Celester?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and best wishes. Okay, item number nine, use permit UPR-10-19-14237, indoor dog training and boarding facility at 2950 Geneva. And, Mr. Palin, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. The next item before you this evening is the use permit for K-9 CrossFit, which is located at 2950 Geneva Avenue. The applicant is proposing to use the existing building for an indoor dog training and boarding facility. The ground floor of the building was previously used as a nail salon. The upstairs contains two residential dwelling units. The subject property is located on a rectangular parcel mid-block between Oriente Street and Schwerin Street. The building occupies the front 2/3 of the parcel, leaving an open rear yard area of approximately 750 square feet. The proposed floor plan identifies an open indoor training room play area of approximately 600 square feet at the rear. Additionally, an approximately 750 square feet outdoor play area is provided in the rear yard. In addition to the play area, the applicant proposes a reception area, office, and boarding area of approximately 420 square feet located at the front of the facility. No exterior modifications to the building or additional floor area are proposed. The Planning Commission reviewed the application for compliance with SEQA and found that it is categorically exempt per Section 15301. The Planning Commission found the proposed use is compatible with the general plan and the zoning regulations of the Light Commercial Zoning District. The following conditions have been added. The facility shall be staffed by trained professional whenever dogs are present. The number of dogs at the facility shall be limited to 12 between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., and eight dogs during overnight hours between 7:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. Use of the outdoor rear yard shall be limited to the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The applicant shall install an artificial turf area that provides a 12-inch gravel subdrain to absorb odors. The applicant shall ensure that all trash and refuse associated with the use shall be stored indoors until the day of trash collection. Staff has, staff is suggesting a modification to condition of approval number two, and the addition of two conditions, and these are not reflected in the staff report. Condition two shall be modified to read, "Any significant modifications and changes to the plans shall be treated as an amendment and shall be subject to review by the city council." The two added conditions shall read, "The applicant shall comply with Chapter 11, which commencing with Section 122380 to Part 6 of Division 105 of the California Health and Safety Code relating to pet boarding facilities." And the second added condition, "A hardwired fire alarm system shall be installed, connected directly to emergency services dispatch center." The Planning Commission reviewed the project and recommends the city council approve use permit UPR 51813470. And I'm available to answer any questions if you...
Thank you, Mr. Palin. Questions from council? No one? Question for additional information or comment? Pam?
Wait till after public comment.
We have no cards.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, but I do have some questions. You just have a comment, right?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, go ahead.
Are you sure? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
A couple of questions. First of all, thank you for adding the fire. That is, so my question today was, you know that we have the facility at Top of the Hill, and when I was on the Planning Commission, we made sure there was a lot of conditions that were added to that that made it pretty, pretty tight, and the guy was very amenable. And one was involving the trash as well for the Republic Services. And I believe it was on July 9, 2000, let me see, let me try to find this. So all the conditions that the gentleman that had to adhere to at Top of the Hill, I just wanted to make sure that the same, those same conditions pretty well were reflected in this conditions. And I believe it says about the applicant, "Shall ensure that all trash refuse associated with the use shall be stored," like you said, "the day of the trash," you added that, which I appreciate that. And there were several other ones. Did you have a chance to review it?
Yeah. The majority of the conditions from the previous use on Mission were kept, but keeping in mind also that this is a much smaller scale facility.
Yeah.
With fewer, a smaller space with fewer number of dogs. The applicant describes their business as primarily taking place off-site, and so where they'll do walking, you know, dog walking and at local parks. So it's a little, it's a little bit different than the proposed pet and play on Mission.
Oh, yeah, it's a little different.
But there, many of the same conditions were kept, but they were possibly amended a little bit to fit in with this different scope.
So, following that, I would say that it has an outdoor, they're going to bring them outdoors?
So they have a, they have an outdoor rear yard area. They also have a large indoor play area, but in their description of how their business operates, they take dogs out off-site to local parks to do training exercises and walks.
And how many dogs are they taking at one time to these parks? And what parks?
So if I...
Because we have a limit, right, to how many from a park, right?
The applicant is here, but if I remember correctly from reading their description, they were going to take four dogs at most at a time off-site while the other four stay onsite.
So we do have in our Muni code, I remember, the, don't we, how many are allowed to walk at a park?
So...
Are you the applicant?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you, it's up to the mayor though.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Sir, hold on. I'm going to give you a chance to speak. I didn't know you were in the audience.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But she's directing it to staff right now.
Yeah, I apologize.
No, no, no. Hold on, because we want to hear, we want to hear it all, believe me. Mr. Palin.
So I'll hold back, and then I'll defer to the mayor, and thank you for identifying yourself, but it's the mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Palin.
Thank you for being here.
What I'd like to do is, I hate to put all this on you. I want to, we want to talk to the one who's going to be in charge here, and that's you, sir. Are you there? Would you kindly step up and state your name? How you doing? What's your name, sir?
Roddick Farn.
Okay. Okay. So we had some questions by council member.
Just quickly, that these are considered just, are these, what kind of dogs? And one specific kind?
Mostly show dogs, no variety, from Labs, couple mixed breeds, Pug, English Bulldog, American Berrys, Malinois, variety.
So variety. So, and then you have the, like I asked the gentleman when I...
So, I'm certified. I went to the Top Dog, that's a dog walker university in San Francisco. Once you complete that, you're authorized to take eight dogs to the city parks.
Yeah.
I have two people who work with me, so we never take more than four apiece, and they've also certified in dog walking.
Okay. So you're trained in what personalities? Get along with other personalities?
Temperament, CPR certified, first aid.
And then what kind, what kind of fencing are we providing here? Because we had a bad incident...
There's about a...
Over in the Bay Shore.
Eight to 10-foot privacy fence around the back.
So we had a bad incident where a dog was able to get, and then it did attack over in the Bay Shore with our police center response. So we just want to make sure that nothing happens for the safety of our residents over there in the Bay Shore, right?
It's fenced.
The security?
The city actually built the fence, because there's an alley, the alleyway between, what is it, Schwerin and Oriente?
And does it have security, like camera, so for your protection as well, so no one can take your dogs?
You can't access it.
They can't? Okay, great.
We're in the middle.
Yeah.
Everything's fenced.
Okay, got it.
So even if they got out of mine, there's like another two fences, and another two fences, both ways.
Yeah.
Behind us, there's probably 15-foot, the Bay Shore Elementary School fence is right back there. So, yeah. I don't...
May I comment on that?
Sure.
So the parcel is landlocked, so their, their rear, it's a zero lot line property, and their rear yard is, it's not on public streets or alleys. Their rear yard is fenced in and adjacent to other rear yards.
Building blocking to far right.
Okay, okay. All right. So for now, that's all I have, but I'm sure there'll be more as well, I'll think about it. But thank you for being here, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
No, you can stay there, sir. Any questions, Dr. Rod?
I don't.
There's two residences on both sides.
So there, I believe that the buildings on both sides are similar to the applicant's building, where it's a commercial space on the ground and residential above. Behind the proposed parcel are single residences.
I'm looking at the title, CrossFit. I'm thinking about exercise. But it sounds like to me you won't be running the dogs CrossFit.
Well, I mean, I will, but I have like special equipment for that, like stationary, treadmill.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Contact, like agility equipment, wobble boards, seesaws, stationary stuff.
Okay.
Endurance.
I'm glad you're here, because it sounds like you really know your business.
Yeah, it's a hobby, big passion.
I can tell. And here in Daly City, we, we want businesses to thrive and don't want to stand in the way. But at the same time, we have to think of the people and your surroundings, and it seems like staff has addressed most of that, to include proper sound and deadening, because, you know, again, if I was living down there and I hear Bow Wow at 1:00 in the morning, I'd be very sensitive to the public in that regard, so that's my concern.
Yeah.
So I just want to let you know that because of...
I totally understand that, and I don't want to deal with that either. So my niche are pedigreed show dogs that are crate-trained.
Yeah, I heard you say that.
Give them a lot of stimulation during the day. By time, we'll hike and train, they're like ready to crate it and relax a bit, to be honest. That's the whole concept of the Canine CrossFit.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
It's not like the pup and play or whatever, where they're going to be running around, chasing each other around.
Yeah, chasing each other's tail.
Lot of structure, lot of, complete opposite, to be honest with you. Complete opposite.
I'm...
Personally, I've put obedience titles, rally obedience titles, I do nose work. I've won shows up in Oregon, Seattle area, going to Vegas on the 21st to compete, comfortable with handling the dogs. I guarantee you guys don't get a noise complaint.
Okay, I'm very comfortable. I mean, it sounds like to me you can go on all night and tell us about your passion and different types of dogs, and your ability to deal with the different type of temperaments, size, what have you. So, okay. Do we have any other comments from council?
None of the passion.
Thank you so much. So, you go ahead and have a seat now, sir. Thank you so much for being here. So... Here they go. So on our entertain a motion for use permit UPR-10-19-14237, indoor dog training and boarding facility at 2950 Geneva Avenue. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Excused.
Dr. Rod?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations and good luck, sir.
Okay, item number 10. Okay, number 10 is finding a public convenience and necessity, PCN number 10-18-13729, to sell alcoholic beverages off-site consumption at Target at 100 Westlake Center. Mr. Palin?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Target Stores is requesting a Type 21 license from Alcoholic Beverage Control, ABC. This license is for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-site consumption at their new location at 100 Westlake Center. ABC requires a determination of public convenience and necessity when the site is located in a high-crime reporting district. ABC defines high-crime reporting district as one where there is a 20% greater number of reported crimes than the average for other districts within the jurisdiction. The Daly City Police Department has provided information that 10 alcohol-related crimes between July 1, 2018, and June 30, 2019 were reported. And I have a representative here from Target if you have questions for me or for them or available.
Thank you, Mr. Palin.
You're welcome.
I ask council, do you have any questions? We do have a representative here from Target as well, if need be.
Do we have any public cards?
We do have one public card. So you want...
I'll wait.
You'll wait? Thank you. You'll wait, Dr....
Yeah, yeah.
Dr. Bow Wow. Okay. What I would do is entertain a motion to open up, I have no questions of staff right now. I'd like to entertain a motion to open up a public hearing?
Nothing.
Nothing? You keep telling me that. Okay, let's open up the public hearing. We do have one card, Ms. DeHale Go.
Donnell.
Uh-huh. Did I say that right? All right, representing the Japanese Community Youth Council.
Yes.
Is it Donnell or DeHale?
Oh, Donnell.
Okay.
Sorry.
Hi.
Hi, good evening, Daly City council members and mayor. I'd like to thank you for your time. My name is Donnell Go, and I'm a youth leadership specialist with the Daly City Prevention Collaborative, a program focused on substance abuse prevention programming with youth in Daly City. One of the heavily focused topics that we raise awareness on and discuss with our youth is the impacts of underage alcohol consumption and access. So serving the youth that I've worked with, many of them have said that their peers or people they know under the age of 21 that have accessed or have consumed alcohol has been provided by someone older, or from purchasing within a convenience store, a liquor store, grocery store within their area or neighboring areas, and various alcohol retailers. With that being said, allowing another store such as Target to sell alcohol off-site increases the risk and exposure of underage drinking, since Target is a store that many teens, families, and kids go to. That can contribute to their curiosity, the risk-taking, potential access, and trying of alcohol. And coming from a social determinants health of lens, an individual can be influenced by what is around their community and environment. With that being said, allowing Target to display and sell alcohol is advocating for the increased risk of youth exposure to underage access and drinking. Whereas instead, we should be taking preventative and protective measures to lessen the exposure. Westlake Center is heavily trafficked by families and already has a Trader Joe's, Walgreens, and Safeway that participates in selling alcohol off-site. Therefore, there is no need, urgency, or necessity for Target to also sell alcohol off-site. Westlake has many stores that are really kid, teen-focused, and activity and learning centers such as Color Me Mine, GameStop, Kumon Math and Reading Center, and it's a really small radius within the area of Westlake Center. So with that being said, I truly hope that you all take that into consideration and be in full support of us prevention providers working with youth on the progress and effort we're making towards educating our youth, and really ensuring that they are not engaging or being exposed to underage drinking or substances. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Go. All right. I have no other card at this time, so we'll close the public hearing. Can we have the applicant step up? Hi, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, council members. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, what's your name?
My name is Beth Apolafia, and I'm here representing Target this evening.
I'm sure we may have some questions. You probably heard the previous speaker. Do you want to add some insight as to Target in general, or this particular store that we would need, we should know?
Sure. Target does sell alcoholic beverages at most of its stores in California, and it's a part of their grocery offerings, so it is not intended to be a major focus of the, for the store, but it is a complement to the grocery section in the Target store. People who buy, come into Target to buy various household goods and pick up groceries will also have the convenience of being able to pick up alcoholic beverages while they're shopping for groceries and other items, as opposed to having to go somewhere else to pick that up. Alcoholic beverages are, will take up a very small percentage of the floor space in the store, probably less than 3%. About a quarter of the floor area of the store will be, will be groceries. Probably about 4,600 square feet of the store will be groceries, and of that, about 500 feet will be alcoholic beverages in terms of floor space. So it's not intended to be a focus, it's intended to be a convenience and a complement to the other products that Target sells. Target takes very seriously the responsibilities that come with selling alcoholic beverages. All of the cashiers, before they're put in a position of selling alcoholic beverages, go through an alcohol beverage training program, have to take and pass a test on the training program before they're allowed to sell alcoholic beverages. Target does also have security. It will have surveillance cameras throughout the store, dedicated asset protection personnel who monitor the floor, and who also monitor the entrances and exits to the store. So there is quite a bit of security, and it has not been the experience at other Target stores that we've had a particular problem in terms of alcoholic beverage sales.
Thank you.
Be happy to answer any specific questions.
Thank you so much. Okay, any questions from council?
I do. What are the, what's the range of alcohol being sold? Is it beer, hard liquor? The what is, what are y'all proposing in terms of what type of alcohol?
Be a little bit of each.
Little bit of each. I can't recall, but does a Target buys in Stonestown, do they sell, do they sell alcohol?
Yes.
Yeah? What are the reasons why some Targets don't sell alcohol?
Oh, sometimes there are restrictions in their lease. Sometimes it's because they're in locations where it's very, very difficult and expensive to find an alcohol beverage license. There are a lot of counties where, because these license types have to be either purchased on the open market or obtained through the ABC's annual lottery system, there are a lot of locations in... lot of locations in more sparsely populated areas where it's very, very difficult to find a license to buy, and they can be in the hundreds of thousands. So there are some stores that don't have licenses for that reason. We've not been able to locate a license.
Now, in most of these Targets, are they kind of like open or are they in, are they in casings?
I'm not sure.
So if you go to the Safeway liquor section in Westlake, like all, most of their hard liquor are called, like, in casings, I believe?
Meaning locked cases?
Yeah.
No, Target, Target does not do that.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for being here. And so I have to base and read my report, and according to the ABC rules, my concern is that it says ABC defines a high-crime reporting district as one where there is a 20% greater number of reported crimes than the average number of reported crimes, as determined from all of this. So according to our report, we have those 237 offenses, because this is not directly a reflection of you and Target, but we have to take in consideration the district itself and the Westlake and the safety of our, you know, community. So if it's more than 20%, and according to this, it's 237 offenses, and if it's just 20%, it would be 207 offenses. So it's 237. So that indeed puts us in that particular district at Westlake into this category, and this is an ABC rule. So from me looking at this reflection in the ABC rule, it's more than 20%. And that is something that we have to think about, because that is, is an ABC rule that we, that's a high crime, and that Westlake and alcohol, so, or whatever their calls are. So this is the data that we were given, and it's more than 20%, Mr. Mayor. So that's something that I'd like to take into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember D. Giovanni.
If I might just comment on that briefly. The, the crime statistics that you're referring to are not specific to alcohol. They are general, crimes in general. And so while it is considered a high-crime area under the formula, what that means is not that we shouldn't necessarily be entitled to the license, but that at that threshold, there is a requirement that the applicant come and, and, you know, present their application to the city, which is what we're doing. So the fact that it's high crime is, is, is the reason we're here. Interestingly or significantly, the other criteria for needing this finding of public convenience or necessity is if the area of the census tract is considered oversaturated with licenses. This particular census tract is not. There are four licenses allowed for this census tract, and only three are currently existing. So it's not considered oversaturated. But it is, but it does, it does, it is considered high crime under that formula.
Yeah, because the thing is, is the ABC crime statistics data, correct?
May I, may I clarify?
You're sure, thank you, Brian.
So I, I was a little confused by it too when I was going through the numbers, but, so it turns out that ABC requires the determination of public convenience and necessity on those two criteria. Either there is a high, high concentration of licenses within the area, or there is a high, high-crime reporting district, which is 20% more. So that's the number you were talking about.
Correct, it's more than 20%.
But when I, when I spoke with the police department, the numbers that they, that the police department provided me with, it was only 10 reported crimes that were alcohol-related. ABC, for that 237, it's talking about all crime within that census, census tract, alcohol-related or not. So that was just to clarify that, why there's that 10 number as opposed to the 237 number.
No, yeah, thank you very much. But I, you know, I clearly know that it's not just alcohol-related, but I do know that even at Safeway, they've had lots of incidents where people, and where councilmember Dr. Rod had referred to being locked up, that there've been baskets full of alcohol being pushed out in carriages, and then the cashiers, of course, don't go after them. But I actually, like about, I don't know, several months ago before they went on strike, they, they actually had that happen quite a few times, and then they just walk out with the alcohol, and they're not even ever reported, because they never call the police, because then it's too late. So there's been times when you speak to the manager at the Safeway, and then those instances are not even reported, so. And I do understand that. Thank you, Brian, for clarifying, but it goes, still goes back to the ABC rule. But I understand what you're saying as well. Thank you for that.
Good.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, um, councilmember. 237 reports?
Total crime.
Total crime reports.
The, the information that I had did not provide me with the time period that, that was.
I thought it was September, July 1st, 2018 to June 30th.
That's the 10, 10 alcohol-related.
Okay.
Crimes. But the 237 number, it, the number, the time period for that one was not provided to me.
Okay, so the time period could have been greater.
It could have been.
Could have been. But let's take the, let's take conservative estimate and say it's actually 237 for one year period. Multiply that times 20%, and I get 47. And out of that 47, it is reported that it is only 10 alcohol-related. So I think we're well within. And the issue of someone walking out of the store, taking an item, whether it's alcohol, it could be anything.
Yeah.
Folks can take other things from the store as well, but they probably lean towards alcohol, but councilmember D. Giovanni saw alcohol, but, you know, I think they can take anything. I didn't know about the census. The homework has been done. There's four permitted in this particular area, and right now it's only three. And Beth, you had also said the occupying 3% of floor space, 4,600 for other things and groceries, 3%, I think is a very, very low number.
Yes.
You sell toys there, too?
Pardon me?
Toys?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I like shopping for toys. I got a lot of grandkids.
If I could, I would just say one other thing on this crime statistics issue. As part of their investigation of a license application, one of the things that the ABC rep does is contact the police department for the jurisdiction that the applicant's premises is in. And in this case, there's been no objection or no concerns raised by the police department.
Thank you. I'm also aware of the two, the different types of alcohol licenses. One is for off-sale, excuse me, where you buy it and you're supposed to take it away from the store and go drink it somewhere else. And there's also on-sale bars, restaurants. I think we would have more of a problem of those drinking on the premises than those who are taking it away from the premises and supposed to be going somewhere else. I think that's where the problem stands. And knowing what you said earlier about, because I, I took these notes down, I've also had experience, is security and your cashiers, and especially going to training. I mean, I would think a cashier would need training if they tried to ID me when I'm buying alcohol, but they probably do. I mean, it's been done before, even at my age, but it's good to know. And, and that Target, to my knowledge, has never had an issue in regards to violating ABC laws that I know of, because I know they come in plainclothes and they watch and they observe. So I, again, I, I just hate to see a business not being able to thrive. And you said something, it's a convenience and not, you said something.
Well.
Just having it there as a convenience only.
That's right, that's right. And, and, and I will point out something technical, which is the, the finding that we're requesting is not convenience and necessity. It's convenience or necessity. Is, is, is what the, the finding is, a finding that...
Convenience or necessity? So somebody would need to drink?
Well, you know, go talk to the legislature and ask them what they meant by necessity.
Well, thank you.
But, but my point is that it's, convenience is, is a sufficient reason for making the finding.
All right, thank you so much. All right, do we have any further comments from counsel?
Only one, like, I know that our other Target is, is attached to a mall, which is different to me than this Target, is a lot of residential apartments, a lot of young kids, roller skating and skateboarding and things like that. So those things to me are concerned, but it's a different venue than the one over at our ceremony mall, right? That's all, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember D. Giovanni. No, no, that's, that's a good thought, and I can basically debate with you, because if there are residences close by, the faster you get home. If you go some others places and, you know, and, oh, boy, I got two, two miles to drive, you'll probably drink it in the parking lot. You know, there's an answer for everything. Thank you, councilmember.
I wasn't the one that gave that answer.
No, 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 it's, it's okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so any further comments? I really, can we move on, on this, city attorney with the three of us?
Good question. So this is considered a PCN, which is finding of public convenience or necessity, which is just a finding for the state to issue their license. We had requested that this be approved by a resolution, and a resolution requires three affirmative votes on the council in order to have the findings. So if we anticipate that this is not going to be approved with three affirmative votes, you won't have a finding of public necessity or convenience. Because this is submitted to the ABC, I would assume they'd want to have a written resolution with the findings as part of the resolution. If we did it by motion, you wouldn't have that. It would just be a motion. So two things can happen. You can proceed with a vote if, if the desire is to have a resolution with three affirmative votes, or you can continue it with the full council.
Okay. Well, I have a... That definitely answered my question, Madam City Attorney, and I'm going to put it right out there, I think we won't have the three. So I would feel comfortable, and I'm sure my colleagues would feel comfortable, is if we weigh this amongst the full entire council, so I think they all have had a chance. I'd rather take that chance, I mean, I'd rather do that than to take a chance now and not get three. Even though it's three of us here right now, two won't make it, huh? I'm trying. Okay, all right, so...
Appreciate the question.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. All right, so... Can I make that motion, or should I have? All right, I'd like to make a motion at this particular time that we table this matter...
Actually, I would request a date certain to March 9.
I would like to make a motion that we move this to be revisited with full council, no later, or on March 9th of this year. Is there a second?
Second.
We got a quick second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. This most, this, this will be moved to March 9. Okay? Thank you so much, Madam City Attorney, that was great. All right. Almost done, folks? Where's, where's my, where's my thing here? All right. Next item, adopting the City of Daly City's pedestrian and...
Presentation. Presentation report from January 11, City Council Budget Workshop.
Yeah, right, okay.
Number 11.
Well, while I, while I talk and stall, my, my apologies, I, I got, I just made so many notes and I think I... While we're in preparation, next is a presentation and report that the City Council Budget Workshop, and just wanted to let the public know that the entire full council took part in this, and we're very happy to have worked with management partners, and I'd like to thank the city manager for, Ms. Malpe, for pushing this forward, and it really gave us an in-depth look as to the state of our city. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Nancy Hetrick with Management Partners. Nice to be here tonight.
Yes.
So I have just a quick presentation. You have a copy of the full workshop report as a part of your packet. We were together on January the 11th. Prior to that, we had a chance to meet and have individual interviews, which was informative in setting the agenda for the workshop on the 11th. We had several objectives for the day. We'd like to start off with a look back, and we were able to take a look at the many accomplishments that were achieved here in the city during the prior year. Those are all included as an apartment, an attachment to your report workshop, or workshop report. We also spent time establishing budget principles as you look forward to the next cycle and reviewing and preparing for your budget, and we'll go through those this evening as a refresher. We heard, as you mentioned, a budget update from staff, and then we spent the last portion of the time together identifying priorities for this next budget cycle. So as I mentioned, we start, we like to start off with the good stuff, right? Started off with celebrating accomplishments, and we had councilmembers share things they were most proud of. That's all documented in your report. We also had a staff report, which was a beautiful attachment. Hopefully, it's now residing on the city's website, because a lot has been achieved. All right, so budget principles, and these are important and significant as the, as the staff prepares budget to bring to, before you, in both developing it, but also in evaluating the contents therein. And so these are the budget principles that were established or identified during the workshop. There are six of them, and some of these you'll see reiterated during the priorities component around financial sustainability, underscoring the importance. So first, evaluating restoration before newer enhanced services, so really looking at those places where you want to bring back programs, staffing levels, or services that may have been reduced in the past, so starting there. Using the fiscal model to show the impact of restoration and/or new services always, so that you can be open and transparent in your decision-making about how and where you're going to be allocating those resources and what the long-term implications might be. Number three, addressing unfunded liabilities and deferred maintenance requirements. You'll see this one in particular later in the, in the priority slides. Making new programs and services cost-neutral, and so again, applying the principle that for ongoing expenditures, you want to make sure you've got resources to cover those. Number five, utilizing excess reserves and resources for one-time purposes for this budget cycle, or to cede enhanced or expanded services on a one-time basis, so a trial, trial run. Again, this is really with the intention of being mindful over the next two years as the budget stabilizes. And lastly, ensuring that the budget is open and transparent and see what was previously unseen. So this is really the, underscoring the importance of being open and transparent, using the fiscal model to communicate the budget realities and decisions along the way. So this is the budget principles we came up with. Those are, again, outlined in your report. So the budget priorities, next, again, this is for the next, two-year cycle, so the next budget cycle. There were four categories that we looked at for priorities, and I'll come back at the end to highlight the top priorities based on council consensus. But the four categories begin with financial health, which we'll take a look at in a moment. Next, we had public safety, then quality of life priorities. Next, we had public safety, then quality of life priorities, and then effective governance was the last of the four categories. So, here, the first one, maintain the financial health of the city. So, you can read through all of these. You'll see that there are a couple of them that are, again, reiterations of the principles that were identified, addressing pension and other post-retirement obligations, developing a plan to address capital projects and deferred maintenance in particular, and related establishing a reserves policy. But also, at the top of the slide, exploring and pursuing revenue options, including a potential for a sales tax measure. So, this is something that received a number of... Received consensus and votes, you'll see, in the top vote getters. All right. The next category is in public safety. The two areas where there's a lot of attention and priority placed were on the first reinstating Engine 95, which we had a lot of discussion on. You'll see the note about identifying on source, an ongoing revenue source that is in keeping with the budget principle, but there was consensus across the council on this item. Also, restoring police services, and again, with the principle of restoring before adding. And then the two additional safety measures, also important. So, addressing or exploring options for addressing BART safety issues. That's a regional partnership. It's not something the city will do on its own. And then continuing to maintain effective public safety training. Our next category has a lot of items. It covers a lot of areas, as you might imagine, for the quality of life for your residents. The top two... Oh, the top, sorry. The top three listed there are in order of priority based on council dot voting. Addressing housing and homelessness, and you heard a presentation earlier, which is, I think, in line with the commitment you have established there. Showcasing Daly City, and this is... It can be through a variety of ways. It can be through media strategy, but also can be through events and attractions. And so, to the degree that there are opportunities, take advantage of those. Completing the Cal Palace Master Plan. We heard some information sort of around that area as well this evening. And then a number of additional priorities that have been... That were identified through the interview process and then discussed during our council. All of these are on the staff's work plan as they're developing your budget. The last bucket, if you will, is about effective governance through engagement and transparency. Another thing that we heard loud and clear as a priority for this council and for staff. And so, the priorities that were identified here include evaluating adding a human rights commission, prioritizing community engagement and transparency. And then we heard about this earlier this evening at the start, I think, about the Census 2020 that is forthcoming. So, that is already something that's getting some energy behind it. So, those were the priorities that were identified. We did some dot-voting at the end of our time and discussion. None of the items fall off the chart, but there's an order of magnitude. And so, as staff is preparing a budget to bring before you, they will be considering the opportunities and the resources that are available. And this is how the priorities laid out. So, after applying the budget principles, the priorities were the dots are on the right-hand side. Reinstituting Engine 95, addressing housing and homelessness, restoring police services, exploring revenue options, in particular, looking at a sales tax option, showcasing Daly City, and completing the Cal Palace Master Plan. So, again, it doesn't mean the other items weren't of value. They were all of value. These were the top priorities. And those are the results. Questions?
Thank you, Nancy. And I apologize that I skipped you.
It's okay. I don't mind at all.
In seeing the items put together, it gives me great pleasure to have worked with you and the council. And even though it was only a few months ago, I just thought it was like yesterday or a week ago.
Last month. It was last month.
Yeah, but it just seemed like it was just yesterday and a week ago because I really enjoyed it and really brought back memories of good times. Thank you so much.
That was my pleasure.
Anyone else?
Nancy, thank you for working with us and the staff as well. As a researcher myself, I know it takes a lot of time, passion, precision to put all these numbers together and to kind of like understand, I guess, the inner being besides kind of like the priorities, right? You interviewed us. You know, you did your homework. And I just want to say thank you to you and your staff. It gives us clarity in terms of moving forward and what we want to see in Daly City. Thank you.
Yeah. Echo, we had... It was very informative and the way you put everything together. And then when we got into the discussion about the general sales tax and then what we could maximize was just like a half a cent. So, I look forward to like in the next steps as we move into the, I guess, the budget, where we can take steps and you'll still be with us. So, we really appreciate that as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Nancy.
Thank you.
All right. 10? 11? Okay. Number 12. I have number 12. Mr. Chu has given me a nice reminder so I know I'm on the right spot. Adopting the City of Daly City's pedestrian and bicycle master plan, Walk-Bike Daly City. Mr. Chu.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Really excited today to present to you the Daly City Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan, Walk-Bike Daly City. Just a little bit of background before we get into the presentation. In 2004, the city implemented its first bicycle master plan in 2004. The one issue with that master plan was that it did not include improvements for pedestrian improvements. And so, in 2013, that plan was updated to include pedestrian-scale types of improvements to consist of including bicycle and pedestrians and implementing those types of projects. Well, fortunately, with the great work with our engineering team, we went after a lot of grant funding. And we were able to secure a lot of grants to implement a lot of these projects that was identified in the 2013 master plan. And so, we started to run out of projects to do. And so, in 2017, we applied for another grant to update our pedestrian and bicycle master plan. And that started off in 2018 when we hired Eisen and Latunick as our consultants to kick off the Walk-Bike Daly City. And so, in 2018, the consultants were brought on board. They started to look into our existing programs, analyze existing data, look at the existing facilities. And then also, towards the end of 2018, we did an extensive public outreach campaign. And they got about 800 comments from the public. In 2019, the plan was being prepared, put together. They were drafting up the plan, and they did some studies into seven unique areas that were high-priority areas that we did some additional schematic design on for that. So, that brings us to 2020, in which we... Well, towards the end of 2019, a public draft was released. Once that was finished in early 2020, we went to our planning commission earlier this month. And the planning commission did review the plan. They also made a recommendation for the council to approve the general plan amendment and affirm the environmental assessment of the general plan amendment. This study, this plan, is a little bit more involved and more detailed than the general plan. And so, for those reasons, there's some amendments being recommended. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Nico with Eisen and Latunick, and he'll go over some of the items in the plan itself.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Nico Latunich, and I am the lead planning consultant on the Walk-Bike Daly City Plan. As Richard said, the objective of the plan is to make walking and biking in Daly City safer, more convenient, more popular than ever before. We chose the name Walk-Bike Daly City as a symbolic acknowledgement that more people in Daly City walk than bike. So, that's why we put the walk in front and that there will continue to be the case into the future. Shirley, thanks. The first task was to do an inventory of kind of the planning context that surrounds walking and biking. So, we looked at things like... Next slide, Shirley. We looked at things like what are the key destinations that people are walking or biking to and or want to walk or bike to? Where are the collisions happening? What are some of the other planning efforts that have been done so far to date? And that just kind of established the context that we're working in. Following that, we did a pretty aggressive public outreach effort. As Richard mentioned, we got over 800 comments from the public. So, next slide, Shirley. The ways that we engaged the community were through an online survey, a pinnable map where people could pin location-specific comments. They could also look at comments that other people posted. They could respond. We have a project website. We made presentations or tabled at more than a dozen community events. And we put out display boards and comment cards that people could submit at about a dozen locations... Or actually, it was more like 20 locations around the city. And this gave us a lot of information. And we created a set of appendices that list all the comments. It makes for pretty interesting reading. And it just gives you a really good idea of what people in Daly City are thinking about when it comes to walking and biking. So, we had a pretty good sense of what was on people's minds. In terms of concerns, there weren't big surprises, but I would say that in terms of concerns, some of the big ones were driver behavior. So, people driving aggressively or distracted driving, speeding. Shirley? I think the next one, maybe? Nope. I thought I had a slide listing the concerns, but I don't. But like I said, it was mostly around driver behavior, also things like the lack of bikeways for cyclists. That was a concern. For pedestrians, being able to cross the street was a big concern. In some of the communities that we work with, one of the main concerns is putting in sidewalks. That's not the case in Daly City because it's pretty built out. So, for pedestrians, it was really being able to cross the street, a lot in challenging or difficult intersections. So, having gotten feedback from the public, we came up with a list of priority recommendations. We were limited in the sense that Daly City has done a really good job of implementing the previous plan. And so, a lot of the low-hanging fruit has already been picked. And so, if we wanted to make... If we wanted to make a real gesture toward improving walking and biking, we had to do something a little more aggressive. So, a lot of our priorities are centered around the seven priority areas that we identified. A lot of them are along John Daly Boulevard. And that's because there's a lot of key destinations there. You have a lot of... That's where a lot of drivers want to be, but also cyclists and pedestrians. So, it tends to lead to a lot of conflicts. It's also just a really difficult place to do anything because the right-of-way is so taken up already by existing uses. And so, some of the projects in the previous plan that were on John Daly Boulevard have not been completed. So, we wanted to look at John Daly again. Some of the other locations were... I have a slide on that, Shirley. The next one. That kind of very confusing intersection at Mission Market-San Pedro Road, where you have three streets coming in together, Buena Perro Serra and San Pedro Road, and then Ceremony Boulevard, Highway 1. And for these, we came up with design concepts that show what they could look like if they were redesigned. And so, we incorporated pedestrian improvements, but also bicycle improvements at these locations. I will give you the kind of the punchline, which is that if you really want to do something that will encourage your average Daly City resident to bike, you have to do something a little more aggressive. And so, for these locations, we actually took out travel lanes in order to create bike lanes with buffers so that people really feel safe. Again, that's for your average Daly City resident who's not a hardcore cyclist, let alone a kid trying to bike to school or a family trying to get out there. We recognize that that's difficult because there is a lot of traffic in Daly City. Losing capacity is not an easy thing to do. And so, we recognize that. And the plan acknowledges that these projects will have to go further traffic studies to make sure that this actually would work. And they will actually... They will also have to go through project-specific public outreach. So, the public outreach that we did is we don't feel like it's sufficient to address some of the issues that might come up when you actually look at these projects more closely, which we couldn't do because of the scope of the plan. They just require kind of going to that whole nother level of analysis for these locations. Also, as part of the plan, we created a design toolkit to give guidance to the city on how they can improve pedestrian and bicycle facilities. So, the design toolkit addresses things like bulbous and pedestrian refuges and these colored bike lanes, or what should the right width of a traffic lane be, those types of things. And one more? And then in acknowledgement that while infrastructure is a really important part of walking and biking, it's not the only part. And so, there are things that the city can do that are not infrastructure-related, but are rather more programmatic in nature, so ways to encourage people to walk and bike. And we picked five as kind of being... Maybe giving the city more bang for its buck. The first one is giving people the ability... Pedestrians the ability to congregate out in public. And so, if you're familiar with the concept of parklets, these are becoming popular in cities, including San Francisco, where they'll just take out, say, a parking spot. It could happen on Mission Street, you know, someplace that sees a lot of pedestrian traffic, where people can sit, they can congregate, they can, you know, have a drink, whatever. That's one. The second one is having the city adopt a bicycle parking ordinance that will require developers to put in bike parking. The third one is trying to address this issue that came up so much about driver behavior. And it's not enough to just say, you know, devote more police resources because the city's already devoting a lot of police resources. It has some, you know, budget implications. So, we wanted to look at maybe more creative ways. And one of the ways is to create some sort of safe-driving pledge for the city that Daly City residents can, you know, go on the website and sign up for. The city can publicize and just kind of give people more of a buy-in into it and try to get people involved in the concept of traffic safety. A fourth one is kind of along the same lines, giving neighborhoods more of a voice in traffic calming their streets and just formalizing the efforts that the city currently has in place. And then the last one is to work more closely with private developers to create developments that are more pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly, pedestrian-oriented, having to do with the design of the building, the siding, the architecture, and so forth. And then there's like a... There's a whole bunch of appendices that have more background information, including, like I said, all the comments that we heard from the public. And that is my presentation.
Thank you very much. Any comments?
Go first. Yeah. As I say, thank you to Richard and the whole staff. This is an extraordinary master plan that you have proposed and have studied and have created more ways for community engagement in terms of getting people out to walk, getting people out to ride bikes. And I think sometimes we get into this suburban flow where we are just separated by homes and we're just relegated to our homes. And that's kind of sometimes a downfall of suburbia. And we need to have time... We need more spaces where people can engage, where you could see people riding bikes or you see other people running or walking. And I applaud your work in terms of doing this. I also applaud you all for putting this out there. This is going to be unprecedented, right? We'll be the first in the county to have something like this, like Division Zero. So, I think this is something that we could also hang our hat on in terms of leading the way in terms of our county. And then most importantly, I just feel like health and fitness is really, really a priority just to seeing the more and more people that are attaining and acquiring chronic illnesses. And I think the most viable way of attacking that or addressing that is to get there, get out, be more active. And we have... And we have issues of health and wellness and, and mental health. So these are all different things that, you know, probably not directly and indirectly that we're addressing is health and wellness, mental health, chronic illnesses, setting the precedence for the county. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rod.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah. Well, he said it all, but first I'd like to recognize the Bike-Ped Committee hanging there. I don't know what time it is, but thank you for staying. And I know that Rachel and the rest of them worked on this along with Mr. Chu and all our engineers and everything. So I know that you guys do, actually do a lot of work on that committee, I heard. So some great members on there. And to connect, to be outside is so important. Like, we see the children, families, this is for everyone in our city, no matter what your age is, to make it safer, to make it, you know, more amenable, more attractive. So if everybody works on this together, thank you for the great work. And I like the forward thinking that we have with everyone, you know, how I think about my, the engineers here. And thank you, Mr. Chu, and for your leadership and all the work. I can't believe, like, I'm looking at it and I'm thinking, wow. I read through the whole thing like two or three times and thinking, this is like a lot of work and a lot of dedication, a lot of passion went into this. And it's for our Daly City residents, who are great pedestrians, mostly, as you said. But we can get them out. We can get the children out. We could change the mindset and reset everything so we can connect together and communicate at top of the hill and plant. People can ride their bicycles and meet Steven at the top of the hill or whatever, right? I mean, so it's just the beginning. So I appreciate everything and looking forward to this great things that we have. We love our Daly City and thank you for that. A lot of work.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chu, thank you for the history dating back to 2004.
Wow.
I can think back, I think it was seven or eight months ago where we got many calls and I had to contact the city manager. And people were calling about, what are those green squares in the road? And needless to say, it came to fruition and we later on found out what they were for. So outstanding and great job. And thank you so much for the presentation, the both of you. And Daly City is really a great place and it's going to be even better. So thank you so much. All right. Next item is number 13. We're almost done, folks. This is the second reading, ordinance number one.
Wait.
Oh, oh.
Wait.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Motion.
So on item number 12, this is to adopt the City of Daly City's pedestrian bicycle master plan and its amendments, GPA 01-20-14402. And I'll need a motion. Motion?
Motion to adopt the City of Daly City's Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan, 2020.
Second.
First and the second roll call, please.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Chu. Second reading, ordinance number 1437, amending Chapter 2.02 regarding city manager's duties. And Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. This item came before the City Council by introduction in regards to amending the city manager's duties per the municipal code. This is the second reading for adoption.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Is there any questions? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to approve the second reading.
So moved?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Thank you very much. Public appearance, I have no cards at this time. Only nobody in the audience. It'd be good to hold up the sign again. Okay, next is appointments, board commission, membership committee appointments? None? Okay. Reports, council committee reports. Let me see. And council committee, this, council committee meetings between February 10th and 24th.
For the interest of time, I can, I can hold off on this one.
For?
For the council committee reports, yeah.
Okay. Dr. Rod?
I don't have anything to report.
I have nothing to report. Fifteen, City Council.
Who wants to go?
I know we've been busy.
Mayor?
I have, no, you guys first. Anything for you guys? City Council report?
I don't remember.
Events?
What?
Going out?
We had the Black, well, we had Shaquille.
Shaquille what?
We had the Black History Month celebration at Dozer this past, was it last weekend? Damn, I can't remember. Oh, the fifteenth. And I think it was a well, great event that we all attended. Everything from poetry to dance to even the food. It just demonstrated the type of community that we have and also promoting our diversity in our city.
Okay. So then I'll add onto that one since we were all at the same events. Then we had the, which I was one of the, I should save that one for the mayor for our Dozer crab feed.
Oh, yeah.
And I'll let him do that one. We also did, didn't we do like two or three other ones? We were like everywhere.
I can't remember.
All right. We might have to wait, report on that next time, Mr. Mayor, but I'll let you report on the Dozer.
Thank you for the reminder, Councilmember D. Giovanni. Starting off Black History.
Yes.
I don't miss a meal. And it was, was you there, Shirley?
No.
I think you missed that one.
With the Dozers, I missed that one.
No. It was two things at Dozer, right? One was Black History.
Crab feed.
And Dr. Crab Feet.
Yeah, seeing you there.
But not the crab feet.
But I think it's the first time where we had food and everybody got fed.
Yeah.
Really brings back the old days. But anyway, that was good. It was good to be with the other council members there.
It was fun.
And then the crab feed, to which Councilmember D. Giovanni, Dr. Rod was there, and Ann Cooney and the staff really does an excellent job there. And it was, it was good. I, there's nothing else to be said. And I'll leave it up to Councilmember D. Giovanni. Anything else that I missed, ma'am?
I don't think so. I think we, we took the food home.
Shh. We're supposed to tell them that. But, but we don't let, we don't let food go to waste. All right. Anything else? Staff reports?
Really quickly.
Oh.
Just really quickly. I know it's been a long evening. We've covered a lot of topics and we have been very productive. So in the beginning of the meeting and throughout the meeting, we were talking about parking and we were talking about transportation. And council just adopted a beautiful pedestrian bike master plan. So hopefully that will encourage more people to bike around Daly City so that parking becomes, issues become a thing of the past. But in the meantime, we're moving forward with our parking initiative. So we have seven neighborhood parking forums upcoming. The first one is Lawson Hall in Bay Shore. That's this Wednesday. I know the mayor appreciates food, so dinner is served for free, as is childcare, so 6:30 to 8:30 PM. That's the first of seven. On our website, which is dalycity.org/parkinginitiative, shows you all of the schedule for all seven sites. If you would like to, you can go onto the website and there's a new thing millennials talk about, pinnable maps. So you go onto the map. If you have a particular issue with a section, you can put your comment on the map. You can also RSVP at that website as well. So we hope to get as many people as possible to have some very meaningful discussions about our parking situation in Daly City. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Malp, for that reminder. I did see the particular dates. Unfortunately, I won't be able to make, is it Wednesday? Yeah, I got two other board meetings to attend, but thank you for the thoughts. And I'd like to thank you and your staff for moving ahead on this initiative because I remember at one council meeting, somebody says, well, why is it taking so long? And we have to do this so that everybody in the community gets a chance because there's not a solve-all-one problem. And again, thank you. You guys keep bringing this bike stuff up, to ride bikes and Dr. Rod says it's good for your health. I'll ride a bike, but it's going to be an electric one. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Any other staff reports? Great job. All right. So next is the adjourned in memory. And I just had it here. I got it. Here it is. All right. We got quite a few, so I'll let Councilmember D. Giovanni start off, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Pablo Marquez Castillo. And just to let people know that he was 86 years old. And one note for that is that he passed away on what would have been, he and his wife's 66th wedding anniversary. And she had passed a few years prior at the same exact time that they got married. So I thought that, and they said he smiled the whole time and pretty incredible. I'd like to also adjourn in memory of the Porterville firefighters that we lost in the fire. Captain Raymond Figueroa, firefighter Patrick Jones, as we know, they were young and it was a tragedy. And to remember those and their families. And we have Shirley Zeff. She was a long-term Daly City resident. She passed at the age of 91 years old here. She used to be a Friends of Our Library before it was called DCPLA and very active in our community. And then another one I like to close in memory of is, this is Rick Medina's, who works with our Public Works. His cousin unexpectedly passed away. She was very young. Karen Lynn Medina. And also giving, Black History Month is coming to a close, but we should never remember that it's our history all the time, that I wanted to note this, that Catherine Johnson from NASA, the mathematician for Hidden Figures, she was very impactful as a woman, but not just a woman, but for our life. And that to remember that those that passed on. And there were so many, as I told the chief, and I'm sure that our former SFPD can say that there have been so many that we've lost and officers in blue lately, so many to name. And so thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni. On behalf of Councilmember Ray Buena Ventura, he would like to acknowledge Arsenio Salang San.
Yeah.
Let's see, 1946 to 2020, he passed away. And also would like to adjourn in memory of the following employees and their immediate families. Public Works employee Greg Gonzalez's brother-in-law, Jeffrey Donald Ingersoll. From the City Clerk's Office, Officer, Office Assistant Vivian Leong's uncle, Walter Tat Leong. And lastly, from the City Attorney's Office, Legal Assistant Adella Sanchez's mother. And that her name is Alicia Sanchez. If we can all kindly pause for a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is now adjourned. Be safe, drive safely, and we'll see you next month. Madam City?